Welcome to the Town Act and Planning Board Meeting for Thursday, February 17th, 2022 at 6:00 PM.
Project.
I'll stand for the pledge.
Two.
Display.
Yep, I'm on here.
Not gonna need the alternate to be all get a chance of looking over the minutes.
Just looking at them now.
Pretty much.
Did we approve the minutes we tabled? On 27-2 table like that.
Is that the thing that we're missing? They were quite lengthy, right?
Yeah.
Yeah. I thought we were missing one of them. I can't remember.
I think we maybe did approve them.
Did we?
Subsequent to that?
We put a couple small changes in there. The one. I'd have to find out.
Which ones are correct this one?
Carry forward. I mean, I know they need to work, but.
You made a couple changes to John's agenda.
I can't, it's been. So many dead holes.
There are changes up there, same.
You guys looking for?
Um, we are just checking our other minutes. I'm looking now at the minutes of January 6th, January 13th. And I've got the minutes of December 2nd with them.
There's two long ones that I think we tabled. John made a couple changes to them. I can't remember if we voted them to go through.
I don't know, I looked at the other.
Any of them?
Well, I guess what I would recommend, because I don't have any minutes in here, is.
Table them.
Well, I think we ought. I would go with those to be approved.
Right.
Maybe Ashley could go back and get the other two or three seconds minutes. For the next meeting, and then we can make sure that we've approved them.
Can you go back and check?
And they, I think they'd be the January 6th, January 13th, and maybe another sec.
It was two in my records.
This was one of them, I remember doing this to it.
Yes, that was.
I think we did approve that December 2nd.
Yeah.
So it'd be the last.
But there's another one in December that I'm not really familiar with. Could be the other one that we can have.
Yeah, I get the 6th and 13th, please.
That's fine.
Don't worry about it.
Do you want a motion for these?
Yeah. Yeah, I think we agree with them.
Mm-hmm.
How are you feeling about the minutes? You good with them?
Yeah.
John, you made the motion second.
All in favor?
For minutes of February 3rd and January 27th.
Yep.
Alright, uh, new business Dustin Forney here. Conditional use. Opera Road 237-001, application for conditional use for Hussey Hill Disc Golf Course. Come up to the podium.
I've never done this before, so I'm not really sure what it's supposed to be doing.
Just tell us a little bit about what you want to do.
Alright, so it's gonna be a disc golf course. It's gonna take up about 25 or 30 acres, mostly on the northern section.
Up in here.
Yep, I do need to put in a parking lot, so that'll be closer to the road. So that's where the flood zone comes into play. Other than that, I just want to put a small shed to put like a pro shop. And to put equipment in as of right now. So it's mostly just gonna be selective cutting for the most part. Other than that, I'll just be putting in tee pads and baskets. And probably some walkways in the steeper areas.
It's the, the blue shaded is the flood zone?
Yeah.
Wait, no, it just changed.
I just put in the shoreline overlay, that's all.
So that's the 100-year floodplain right there?
Uh, that's the shoreline district, let me give you your floodplain.
That's shoreline.
Have it turned on right there?
Okay, it is, yeah. Let me get rid of this for a second. There's your floodplain.
Okay, so the floodplain extends further than the shorelines?
Yeah, it's, uh, it's pretty low right there with that river. And then the land goes pretty steep up.
From the front of that, it's over 100 feet. That would change. And there's pretty low on it. And so where in there is the parking lot? You want, right up in that top corner there? That general facility vicinity? I mean, that huge one, probably just like 120 feet by 60 feet, just, I mean, I don't expect to be having hundreds of people there at a time.
So I guess you'll have to supply us with a map that shows the shoreline zone, the floodplain, the location of the building, and the location of the parking lot.
He just wanted to come in and just tell you what his proposal was, and then know what, ask what he wanted, more or less wanted to know what you guys were gonna require from him.
Yeah.
I had told him that he was gonna need a survey and all this other stuff. Figured it would be good for him to introduce himself to you and, uh, and the project and the scope of the project, so. More or less a preliminary.
So you're gonna have the floodplain in the shoreline zone surveyed and delineated on your parcel?
Um, if that's required, yeah, I'm just not really sure. I mean, it goes back, I mean, pretty, you know, pretty steep, but I guess, I mean, I don't know, it shouldn't, I don't think it should be a problem, but if you need a survey, I can get that done.
Well, we just want to make sure that the parking lot is outside of the floodplain.
Pretty much.
I mean, is there a way to get an exemption from that? I mean, I know that people have houses and stuff built in that floodplain next door and next to the river.
Right. There is a, he's talking this one right here.
Jason, can you put the topo on?
The further back you go, it gets really steep.
I know, yeah.
And then, I mean, maybe according to that map, because that map shows a little bit different drawing of my property than the survey that I have.
The tax maps aren't 100% accurate, they're more or less just.
What's the difference you see?
On that top part where it goes, it's going horizontal and it goes up, on my map it just goes horizontal all the way across to the back line.
So the triangular top right is cut off on your map?
I don't think I'm gonna be able to see it on this thing. I have the same thing as that.
And you've walked the property line, I assume?
Oh, yes.
And could you, could you tell which map was correct from your?
It seemed like my map was correct, the way that they had it, but I mean, I have, this is maybe the second map I've seen drawn like this, but they were older maps, so I just figured it had been altered since then. But that, I mean, I guess, I don't even know if that's, that was in the floodplain, I'm not sure, that would be a little more feasible, because I think it's pretty flat back there, but.
Well, it looks like that area is outside of the floodplain. But I guess if you found the back corner of your, oh, yeah, right there, I guess if you found the back corner of your neighbor's lot there, you'd be able to figure that out. I guess, and also the board would determine if, if we wanted a survey of the whole parcel or just the area he was gonna be.
With the building in.
Working in, you know, because that, that does make a difference.
Yeah. I think it would be the area he's gonna.
Put the building in.
Put the parking lot. The course and parking lot and. What type of surface do you envision for the parking lot?
Uh, something that's, uh, I mean, not necessarily paved, something more previous, so that. Hopefully, I mean, I don't really. And that's, you require having more of a paved surface, or it can be directed to a certain area, if that's, I don't know. No.
It's not required. I mean, it's what you want, or.
I mean, that would be most feasible for me to start with, you know, and it's something. Like I said, it's not a huge lot, before I got there, it was like around, you know, $20,000 to do that, so.
And, um, the. For the board guys, this sort of use, um, if you look at page 13, should we really be looking at the site plan again?
Page 613.
Page 32. I would think it kind of falls into G.
Yeah.
Yeah, so you're going, of course.
Yeah. Well, those things are not permitted in the shoreline zone. For one.
Yeah.
So what I mean, that's. You're gonna have to push the whole thing. Your driveway's fine, but everything else is gonna have to get pushed out of the shoreline zone.
I'm pretty sure the parking is too.
The way he says it, it sounds like the parking's.
Right, it should be pushed out of the shoreline zone.
Yeah.
It's, it's gonna be harder for him.
Well, there's, uh.
Given the terrain, but.
The terrain, there's a small section right here, because right now, the shoreline, the overlays for the shoreline, so he has this back corner.
But that is in the 100-year floodplain. We gotta figure out if we care about that.
It's only cars, just kidding.
I'm just smelling.
Is that a rule zone?
Yeah, it's a rule.
Is this site plan?
What else? What else do we, what do I need?
Oh, should we read through? Should we look at, um? Yeah. Page 90. Ashley, you don't have an extra coffee, the ordinance over there, do you? Can you pass that to Crystal? We need another coffee over here.
Yeah.
I got one, I have it.
So you do have it?
Yeah.
Then we're good then.
Thank you.
So I'm looking at applicability of site plan review. I mean, it says it is in the land use chart, but then number four, establishment of a new use, even if no buildings or structures are proposed, including non-structural, non-residential uses. So that's pretty much the applicability. Pre-application on the next page. Which is pretty much what we're doing right now.
Yeah.
The purposes of the pre-application conference are to allow the planning board to understand the nature of the proposed use and the issues involved in the proposal. B, allow the applicant to understand the development review process in regard to submissions. C, identify issues that will be addressed to future submissions. D, make the applicant aware of any opportunities for coordinating the development with community policies, programs, or facilities. In addition, board may schedule a site inspection in accordance with subsection, if deemed necessary, and resolve any requests for waivers and variants, variations from the submission requirements. Information required. Proposed site, including location, size, general characteristics, nature of the proposed use, and potential development. Any issues or questions about existing municipal regulations and their applicability of projects? Any requests for waivers from the submission requirements? So submission requirements. Page 94. All applications for site plan review must contain the following information. Fully executed signed copy of the application for site plan review. Because right now, you are.
Conditional use.
You have a conditional use form in front of you. Evidence of payment for the application technical review fees. Eight copies.
Are you following?
I have a copy of this stuff.
Okay.
Of site plan review, like in the ordinance? Yeah. This is just for us too. Okay, so the record owner's name, address, telephone number, applicant's name, address, telephone number, different.
I believe that's, turn it off, map and application and pay fee and all that stuff.
You turned in a map? Uh, hold on a second.
I didn't get it in my packet.
It's not mine.
All I got is the deeds.
Yeah.
A big map.
There, I'll have to go down and look where it would be.
We're gonna have to survey, it's gonna have to survey, right?
Yeah, actually, there's a list, you know, the list of abutters, um, the location of all setbacks and buffer, um, the boundaries, which we don't have a map. He's got the tax map and lot number, he's got the deeds. Doesn't have a survey. classification.
That's really all we need, is that, that map, I mean, there's, there's A through I that we need, but it's really the map with all the buffers on it. And the location of the proposed parking lot and building. And probably the rough delineation of which part of the parcel is gonna be used for the.
Size of the building.
Yeah, oh yeah, of course, the size of the building, absolutely, but that'll be right on the.
Right.
The map needs to be to scale.
And that'll show the floodplain, right?
Yeah, I'm trying to see where it's.
It was from a survey, so it doesn't have like the floodplanes and stuff on that map, so I'm not sure. Sorry, this is my fault.
I don't, I gotta, I'm gonna, you're gonna have to call, I'm gonna need you to make some more copies, so. I don't have the means to copy this one.
Yeah.
It's my fault, guys. He does have, uh, I don't know if you want to take a quick peek at it, or you want to just wait until we get more, but he does have it laid out.
Well, you brought it up, you should look at it.
Huh?
We should look at it.
He, he has a park where he proposes a parking lot as well as the, um, the.
That's the coolest layout. Right, 18 holes.
What is parking?
Parking lot and shed, and there's your.
Seat bag.
Floodplain.
All just total.
Well, also the, the actual driveway entrance needs to be on there. I mean, we can assume where it is, but there does seem to be like a tiny little spot where you can squeeze in, that's not in the shoreline zone for your driveway, so. That's the, that's the floodplain, because the floodplain is wider than the.
So that's on here.
Yeah.
Yeah, the floodplain.
I see it, yeah, no.
We gotta get the shoreline zone on there too.
Yeah, it was on there, it was my fault for, I should have asked you for more copies.
Yeah, but you could draw that in.
Right.
They're a little like, they just go different ways, but yeah. I mean, I could try to put it back more in that area, turn it like. Put it back, it, you know, starts to go up right there too, so I'd have to.
Well, I think if we, if we can get it out of the shoreline zone, maybe part of it could be in the flood zone, we have to look at the, I have to find that in here.
Do you have any gravel in here to make your parking lot? Cut into the hill?
There might be some ledge in there, but I'm not positive.
You might get lucky.
Well, there's a big pile of stuff that looks like from when the last time they, they logged it out, they just left a pile of rocks there, it's kind of regrowing there, so.
What are you gonna do with this over here?
Either put a private residence, or maybe possibly do like a, what's it called, an event center or something like that? I've been in restaurants for 20 years, so. Obviously, I don't have the money to do that quite yet.
Do you anticipate any kind of, uh, head bathroom facility for the golfers?
Um, I was initially gonna just put in some portable ones, and then eventually build a building, try to build a building more like up in this area, when I can with, because up here is more where, like these circles are where they did soil tests for septic systems, so I'd have to, I'd have to put that building like up in this area more, if I was gonna do.
So, I mean, you're not gonna do it to start? You're just gonna have porta potties to start?
That was the plan, yes, that's not.
No, I'm just asking.
Yeah, no, that's the plan right now, with just the other shed, be like a pro shop, and then build a shed on top of, you know, some cinder blocks or a foundation to put the garage in there, that is, yeah. Just a small, like 12 by 12 or something.
And the holes, it's just a post in the ground, right?
Yeah.
Chipping head or something.
And then, uh, they're just, we'll make like, it's like six by 10 little platforms to throw off of.
For the tee?
Yeah.
What are they made of?
Gonna do like gravel lumber, then probably some bricks to finish it. Little mortar or anything like that, though.
If you're gonna play at night, you're gonna light it up?
Are there gonna be any lights in the parking lot or the?
I hadn't thought about that, but maybe just in the apartment, just in the parking area for people when they're leaving, if they're playing with, you know, with dusk, but.
What year, how it's gonna be?
Um, I was gonna plan opening like around nine till dusk, you know, seven or eight in the summer, you know. Probably four or five, the rest of the year when people can play. Some people play in the winter, I expect to get a lot of people, so.
Yeah, you can rent snowshoes too. But that's definitely something we'll want to get pinned down.
Yeah, you gonna, you gonna put up signage on there, imagine?
I would, yeah, just put like a sign just in front of like where the parking lot is. Nothing too huge.
So there's, yeah, there's some requirement, requirements around signs.
Yeah.
You should really have a, do you have any idea or an estimate in your business plan of the peak traffic, peak hours, peak traffic?
Um, I mean, I figure, I did have, I do have a business plan that's not completely done, but mostly done, and it's mostly gonna be from, you know, June to September, sort of the peak season, those like four to five months. Um, I mean, from what I was seeing, it was like on max days, like 250 to 300 people a day in the summertime. But like in the off-season?
Yeah.
Probably nothing.
Yeah. That's a lot of traffic on, um, in the summer. But these are the kind of things in the plan that we're gonna need to, you know, we need to nail down. It's good to get your ideas and whatever, what you're thinking. I'm horrible at disc golf.
Not the greatest, but it's fun.
Jason, can you put the off prefer protection district on there?
There's the aquifer map, though.
Oh, there it is, um, underneath FEMA. There's a blue dot FEMA and then the one right below it is aquifer. Yeah. Okay, so it's it's not, I mean, it is, it is on your property, but it's not any it's any greater than the
Yeah.
Other two. Yeah, yeah. I'm looking at, um, page 97. Utilization of the site. The plan for the development must reflect the natural capacities of the site to support development. Buildings, lots and support facilities must be clustered in those portions of the site that most site suitable conditions for development, environmentally sensitive areas included but not limited to wetlands, steep slopes, floodplains, significant wildlife habitats, fisheries, scenic areas. Habitat for rare and endangered plants and animals, unique natural communities, natural areas and sand and gravel aquifers must be maintained and preserved to the maximum extent. So floodplain is mentioned in that.
So there's a house right across the street from your property?
Yes.
Is your entrance um, going to be directly across from their driveway?
The parking lot would be, and I figure there'd be an entrance on each side because we're like 75 feet apart. If you're gonna have to, for traffic purposes.
Oh, you're gonna have, you propose two entrances?
I mean, I, I would I think it said it wanted to have two entrances, if that don't need to have two, then.
I'd say it'd be better to just have one, as long as people can turn around in there properly.
Yeah. Like the, the little, like indent, like where floor driveway that's on the road. Right about like 50 feet away from their driveway. South.
It's on page 98 if you wanna look it up.
Yeah, that's, you know, that's another example, one of the things we need to nail down in your application. Driveway.
Pretty vehicle trips a day would be quite a bit.
Right, so it's no use which generates less than 100 trips per day shall have more than one two-way driveway into a single roadway.
Well, if you get, would you say 200, 300?
250 to 300, but I mean, I would think that most people are carpooling, but that's assuming. On the busiest day, that's spread over 11 hours, so.
Oops. There you go.
No.
You already talked about water supply?
No, even.
Yeah, that's, that's a few pages up. But you're right across the street from the river, so as far as fire goes.
Let's see.
No problem there.
Yeah, in your shed, you're gonna have water? Most likely, um, electricity.
It's quite a bit about stormwater management too. On page 101 and 102. Just, uh pretty much, uh do you wanna tell us which way your parking lot is sloped to where the water's gonna end up and?
It's gonna go towards the road or, I mean, even it, I mean, it probably goes to either side even. It doesn't have to go all to one side. Right along the front, there's at least three culverts crossing the water to the river, so there, on the least, especially in the middle part, it drops down very good and like when it's in the spring, it's like, you know, two or three feet deep right there. But then it comes right back up. And then levels out again. But, so I mean, it's gonna wanna go that direction.
Right, sure. Maybe just have some sort of, uh
I don't plan, I mean.
Drainage system, you know, some like a catchment area.
Yeah.
Design something so that you're
It's gonna have to, you know, the driveway's gonna go through there, so it's gonna be, I mean, driveway's gonna be at least, you know, 40, 50 feet between, you know you know, to get to where you guys are gonna want to have the parking lot, so. I don't think the drainage will be any problem at that distance, like because right now it's all pretty, it's pretty flat right now anyway. It's not like it comes right down to there. It comes down and flattens out, so it stays pretty damp there already, so if, I don't know, if you put gravel on top of it, I don't think it would change it too much.
Would be nice if your parking lot didn't shed water to the driveway.
Yeah.
If it maybe shed toward the back of the lot, so that, uh
I just think there's plenty of places for it to drain.
Yeah, I think you have enough room, but you do need need to have that on your plan.
Yeah.
The direction of the water and the, uh, location of the any sort of systems that you, you know, like a retention area or whatever would have to be on there. I think we should tell him you need to survey for the half of the lot.
Yeah, yeah, I agreed earlier. I don't think for the whole thing, but for the golf course part. And the parking lot and focus on, uh on the floodplain and shed. Show the floodplain, show the zone, uh, shoreline. We're gonna have to have some detail on the parking lot. How many spaces do you think in the parking lot?
Um, it should be, I mean, if it's 120 by 60, I think that's like 20 hours.
You got 50 by 100 on your plan.
That was 100, okay. I think it's I think that the quote that they gave me for us for 120, so it's just.
Oh, okay, yeah, well, we wanna
Yeah.
Pin down the exact size, yeah. So you'd have like a central aisle and stalls on either side, so to speak. Yeah.
And with one entrance, enough room for them.
That's, that's why I would have to, yeah, 60 feet would give enough so you can pull in and then back out and turn around.
Think about fire trucks too, right?
Right, emergency, any emergency vehicles.
Yeah.
For turnaround.
A big fire truck has to be able to go in there and turn.
Yeah.
I think it does. Where does it say that?
Uh, I did, I did see it.
Right, but
I don't know about a fire truck, but it ain't going certainly.
Look, a fire, a fire truck can always back out. The thing about people's residences, they can't turn around in there.
Right, but they use the road to turn, as long as it has a place to turn.
Yeah.
It's something we have for the solar farm.
Were you envisioning the driveway coming to one end of the parking lot? Or to the middle of the parking lot, because they, they can probably pull in, back up and come out if you had your driveway.
If there was just gonna be one entrance, it'd probably be more towards the middle.
Yeah, they might be able to. Right. Then you, 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 it would probably be easier to satisfy that requirement if it was in the middle of the thing. Or, or on either end, but
Yeah.
It'd be nice if there was, if we could do it with just one driveway.
For the cars, they shouldn't back into the streets, you know. It's gotta be arranged so they don't have to back.
Right. That, that'll be no problem. With that, with that size of parking lot. Yeah.
The emergency vehicles is, uh, on page 99. Their, uh, internal vehicle, vehicular circulation.
Yeah.
Under, uh, where is it, B?
Yeah, that's for, that's for something different.
Is it?
Yeah, it's for buildings and paved surface, that's if you're going to like Iron Hills or something like that, or.
Well, that's kind of the thing about site plan review is that when you have a very small, small scale project that still falls under site plan review, it gets hit with these
Right.
stipulations that are really designed for a Hannaford. So that, that's what the board needs to, you know. I think it'll be, make sure that emergency vehicles can turn around, but do, do you need appropriate signage, fire lane, no parking? I don't think so.
None of that, but when you said, uh, when Pat stated the emergency vehicle.
Right, yeah, it's in there, yeah. And I think if his driveway comes up to the middle of his parking lot.
Right, they can either.
They would be able to do that. Then maybe your parking lot would slope either way like that with your driveway in the middle.
You looking for the form, something you'll?
Yeah. Oh, right in there, yeah. Yeah, I've got that. Yeah. All right, well, you've probably got a good idea on most of the things we're gonna be looking for on the
What, an actual, like a survey from?
That's kind of, yeah, well, it seems like where you have this boundary discrepancy up in the
Yeah.
top right. Uh, no other side there.
Oh, where it's different on, yeah.
Well, it seems like it would be in your, your benefit to get that.
Yeah.
Because if you in fact don't own that, your property is gonna be a couple acres smaller and you might wanna inform the town and they can change your property taxes. Or if you do own that, you can include that in your golf course.
Yeah.
So it seems like it would be beneficial to to have a survey of the maybe just extend the, on the, the bottom of the top, so to speak. Maybe if you just extended this line right here across like this and surveyed this part of the property and depending on how far down you're gonna, you plan to go.
Yeah.
I mean, I would be okay with that, but.
I don't think we need to do the whole thing.
No, I mean, if you, in the future, you plan to expand to the other half, maybe we would require you survey that part. But if you're not really gonna be active in that area, it doesn't seem necessary at this time. That make sense, everyone?
Yes.
Yeah, cause he said maybe add a later 80 foot house on there.
Yes, that's not part of this.
Right, but if it's just a residence, we didn't require him surveying for that.
But he's be, so you wanna come, come in down from this part here, right, or this part?
Uh, depending on how far he plans on going.
Cause he's already
Oh, really?
Yeah. So this, so where you cut him off, guy, he's he's in the ready boat.
Well, right, well, it's up to the board where we ask him to go to. It just seemed like one of these would be an easy place to end the survey. Could go with this one.
Split for the one.
You might wanna advise him to, to think about what he's doing in the future because he talked about a residence and then wants to put a pro shop and so on.
Yeah.
So you don't want him to put anything where he got his tests.
You're getting taxed with 30, so.
He said his test, right, he said?
I don't know, he said he had test pits done. He got, has to make sure he protects that area so that he has a septic system. He got, has to make sure he protects that area so that he has a septic system.
It wouldn't be the worst idea on, if you care about it that much.
Survey, the culvert should be on the survey.
Yeah, he's gonna need some help with this.
Yeah.
Right, I'm just saying maybe your location of your test pits would be on the map.
Have them, but, well...
But if you're not putting a septic...
The test pits.
Oh, they are on there, yeah.
Sort of on it, but yeah, that's definitely the one I was planning on using.
Yeah.
In that area.
So you have a testing...
Stay pretty level. I think when it slopes down.
I think when heavy survey like straight across, you're right, you feel better about that.
Something like that. It just seem like a... Well, yeah, I mean, it, it would be up to you as long as it's, it's fully inclusive of the...
Okay.
Of the project or, or most of it. I mean, it looks like you got a couple of laws that wouldn't be included, but...
Is it really that much more to have it? I mean, is this, is this for cost savings? Yeah, you should...
Right, you could ask the surveyor what the difference was.
Yeah, because if you're planning to do it anyway, right? I mean, find out, but that's all we need, is just where you're...
Drive, yeah, the driveway's gonna go in.
Get the driveway location.
Yeah, where it's gonna come in.
Where the curb cut's gonna be.
Easy culvert, right, yeah.
There, there, there's another one.
Oh, I had another thing, there's, um...
That's your marker, right here.
There is, um, some, an area where people were living on the property.
Is that where the camp, the public camp?
There's like a camper still in the woods there.
Yeah, there, yeah.
Are you planning on getting rid of that?
Yes, yeah.
Right. I don't think we'll require that, but I was just curious.
Also, like a little building, it's looks, I think the kids over here built.
Uh-huh. Yeah.
For them to fall apart.
For liability.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I think it has windows and I think that's something that's held it together, is the windows.
Yeah. Yeah.
How many acres total?
The, uh, the town has it as thirty-six. Does, his survey says thirty-four. I think that's probably that little.
Yeah.
But yeah.
Yeah.
That would be good to resolve.
Uh-huh. Yeah.
Other than that, just being more accurate with placement of everything. Make an actually, uh... Something for the parking lot, like a professional.
Size of the parking lot, the...
If you show where it's gonna be with the driveway, um, show us how it's gonna drain. Show us where they're gonna park. Guess that can all be on the... Well, that might be a separate drawing, huh?
I think whoever you have do it for you, they'll probably help you out with that, you know?
Yeah, I think you could put, put the, the rough location of the parking spaces right on the same drawing, we're not...
Yeah.
I guess maybe the number of spaces would be of consequence.
Just refer to the book, that's all you gotta, you know?
Finalize the size of the building and all that stuff too. As far as, um...
Where you gonna place the porta potties?
Yeah, right.
Probably next to the shed or in that vicinity.
You just, he's saying, you just have to...
Somewhere they can drive in and pump it out, you know?
Yeah.
Yeah.
You just have to put it on there, he's saying.
Okay.
And then maybe we'd have something about if you're... If you had more than a certain number of visitors per day, eventually you'd have to get a, get a septic system. But I don't know what we would...
Yeah, have turn, are you gonna have tournaments there and stuff or?
I mean, eventually, yeah, hopefully.
Ideally.
Yeah.
Hopefully they have that, then we'll be able to build an actual building to put restaurants and stuff in. I guess the only thing that might have to be like some walkways back in the stair cuz it's pretty steep, so... Like, but when I get a survey, I guess I'll talk to them about that and see what they think.
Yeah, show, show where they'd be, that would be good. So stepped walkways?
Probably with steps and maybe some like boardwalk walkways or something like that.
Right, you don't wanna have the topo lines on the map.
Yeah.
So when you do all that, just think about accessibility and there's so much, I mean, this whole thing is pink. You know, it has so many six, six, four, seven, four, I mean, it just keeps going on and on. Just as long as you cover all of that and you come in, it'll be a breeze.
I don't, I don't think it's, I think a lot of them are...
That's the checklist.
This is the checklist that we have to use, yeah.
That she gave me a copy?
Yeah, and it will, it's referring to all of these sections and those are in here.
Okay.
So if you just use this.
Yeah.
And a lot of it's not gonna reply, but if you almost use, you know? Save yourself some time. Fun reading.
You can view our ordinance online and even, there's a PDF file of it.
I think that's it. Yeah, we're, we're good with you.
All right.
Yeah. Good luck.
Plan out like a month or Jason about it?
Whenever you're ready.
Yeah.
Talk to Jason and...
Done.
Get you on the agenda.
Right, basically it'd be the survey, the biggest thing.
Yeah.
Try to call around sooner rather than later too.
Yeah.
And us scheduling a sidewalk too.
Right, that's...
We're saying probably won't be able to do that till...
We'll wait till we at least get the survey, yeah. Depends on the ground conditions. Right now, it's like, oh, icy. Not gonna be that fun though.
What are you shooting for, like?
I'd like to be open by summertime, but, I mean, it's not completely necessary.
It should be doable.
Okay.
Should be doable.
It's doable with us, yeah.
Oh, sure.
Yeah.
It's just a matter of, again, the survey, I know, for some of them, behind getting out of it, the survey.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, thank you for coming in.
That's true, getting a survey might, might slow.
I know, I think you always say, is it year out?
Yeah.
A lot of them are, no help.
Well, I mean, you think we should ask him for a wetland delineator? Cuz I don't know if a surveyor really does that.
Too much there, I mean, you can see where it's wet.
Well, it's kinda wet one near that camper.
Right, but it, we need to, it's more like where is the shoreline zone?
Again, wouldn't they do that?
I don't think this, does the surveyor do that?
I think you, he'd have to. Kinda has to know where it is.
He can go through the middle of the road and he can just measure in because you can pretty much tell two hundred fifty feet.
Yeah, well, we'll, we'll see, yeah. I mean, we may have to, I guess, but don't need to now.
You always have to ask the question to the, the surveyor, see if he can put it in, if he can't.
Yeah. That seems like the biggest thing.
We should have, um, Jason telling him.
Yeah, I know, yeah.
Can you have Jason tell him to, um... When he gets the survey to include, um...
Wetlands.
Wetlands, burnout pools or whatever.
Wetlands delineation.
Wetlands, vermin pools.
Jason, can, can you get him real quick? Can you get him?
Justin, one of them.
Poor guy.
I know. At least it's better than, other ones we've gotta call back.
Yeah.
One of the things on, on the survey to ask him to do is, um, uh, notate, outline the wetlands, any wetlands that... Just wanna make sure that gets in there. We don't know if they would do it automatically, so we wanna make sure you mentioned it.
Good.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you. Nobody's adding them in, uh...
This is good, it goes.
Uh... Right, it's an easy one to do.
I'm gonna jump out of something to, uh, cuz the Pepins came in. So I'm just gonna bump them into this category now. That's all right?
I guess so, I don't know.
But we know, all, all we have after is our, just started to schedule on...
Right, but that could, could be pretty lengthy, I mean...
Right. Can we get updated documents?
Do we have updated, uh, papers?
No.
No, I didn't even know they were coming in.
I'm okay with fifteen minutes. Fifteen minutes, but we don't have... We can't do any real substantive. Why give them fifteen?
I think it's, it's up to the chairman.
Yeah, we can give you fifteen minutes. Yeah, just kidding. All right. It depends how fast you talk. If you talk fast, you get more information in it.
They both talk at once.
Right.
Hey, Nick, so Rob, um, Rod and Chris, I'm sure, and he is the gentleman that I mentioned previously that, um, he's a gentleman with the environmental side. So, I think I can, uh, stop there in two seconds, but, um, I will have a set of plans revised and over you guys by, probably, a week. Try to get those over you as soon as possible. I just wanna make a caution, so I wasn't able to make the revisions. My mom did give me, she came to the last meeting and I guess you guys had talked about a few kind of quick concerns, um, that I wanted to bring up here just to help me when I go to do my revisions, um, to make sure we're all on the same page. One thing she had mentioned was that, um, the, we're applying as R Pepin and Sons Inc. The land is actually owned by three different LLCs that are part of our business. So I don't know if I need to change anything on the application form, um, related to that, or if that's gonna be an issue in any way. Um, but it's three LLCs that are kinda more or less owned by R Pepin and Sons that own the land. Um, so just wanna be kind of upfront about that. And, um, I guess there was a bit of talk too about, um, kind of the, the washing area that we had on site. I did wanna reaffirm that we would only be washing materials that were, uh, the washing area is the purple area that we showed there. And that area is outside of the Aquifer Protection District, um, in Acton. And to reaffirm, we will only be washing materials that, um, are onsite. We won't be taking any offsite materials, um, onto the site to wash, and I am gonna be very clear about that with the revisions that I make to the plans moving forward, so that's set in stone. There's, I guess, a mention about possibly putting a, a fence around that area. I might propose something that would, um, be a little bit cheaper and, and, and better for everybody possibly is like just putting like a berm around that area, like a five foot tall berm, um, of material. Just to kinda keep ATVs, any unwanted people out of that area, whereas we will have like a few ponds right there. Something that we could kinda do, um, cheaply and efficiently, um, versus putting up an entire fence. So you can see here on the plans too that we have one area which we've kinda designated towards the entrance, um, which is the pink area near where we're showing the, uh, maintenance garage. And we're proposing in that area to be able to import some materials, um, for processing. And those materials would only include, the only thing, the only materials that we wanna bring onto the site are loom and some clay. To be able to help out with reclamation should we need to, um, in the event that some of the stockpiles of loom that we have on site, um, we don't have enough material for any reason. Uh, we'd like to be able to bring in a little bit of loom and clay to help supplement the reclamation effort, um, and actually be able to put the loom in probably thicker in some areas to really get some hardy growth on site. And then we'd also, so that's where we would store like the imported loom and clay that we would use for reclamation. And then we'd also like to be able to bring in some, some concrete and some asphalt, um, to be able to crush those up and process those and sell them. So that's the proposed area that we have shown there and in pink is kinda where we would process some materials from offsite. We would not be bringing any stumps in from offsite. We definitely don't wanna go down that path. We don't plan on doing that. But moving forward, we are trying to be able to just bring in like concrete and asphalt to be able to process those materials. And a few other things I was gonna talk about quickly. As far as the, the number of trucks go, um, me and my dad got the chance to talk about this a bit more. We'd kinda started off asking for about thirty trucks. We're hoping to be able to try to get forty-five trucks is what we're proposing, but the reason behind that is, is that we, the roads posted for one for a whole month where we're not gonna be able to go onto the site. Sometimes the postings can last longer than a month. So that kinda affects us quite a bit, but we also wanna work with the town, um, around the Fourth of July and around Labor Day to really limit the amount of trucks that we have going on site. We're thinking the Fourth of July week that we have no trucks going in at all for the whole week. And we're thinking around Labor Day that we kinda cut it down to like, just like five trips per day throughout that Labor Day week. We know that those two weeks are really important as far as tourism and the lake crowd up here. And we're all for working with the town and really just cutting it down to just five trucks a day, um, for those, for those weeks and for the Fourth of July actually just shutting down. But in return for that, we're hoping that we can get a little bit more trucks in there other times of the year. And we definitely will not have forty-five trucks per day going in and out of there on a regular basis. But that will allow us, like if a big job comes up down the street and we need to get the material there, it'll give us the flexibility to be able to do that. And I'm thinking it will also kinda help give us a bit of flexibility as as far as letting some private people come in, you know, a pickup truck comes in and wants to get a little loom or those kinda smaller things that you gotta do up towards the lake, the people that are looking for a little load of stone for their camp. Those all will count as trucks entering into the pit, so, um, we think that trying to shoot for about forty-five trucks per day is what we're looking for, but we wanna talk to you guys specifically about those, those two real busy weeks and how we can stay right off the road for those two holiday weeks. And one last thing I'd mentioned is, is part of the revised approval is that uh, we did meet with the Square Pond Association a few weeks ago and we had a great conversation with them. And they're really in support of this project. They're happy that there's not any houses going back here and that the land's gonna kinda remain the same. And they're happy about the, the three of us land trust donation. It's a really good thing for the watershed and for, for Square Pond, uh, long term. And one thing that we kinda did talk to them about was a long west shore drive, um, in the areas where there's about a hundred foot buffer. If Jason can... So not all areas along. Be like the areas where you see that we're about a hundred feet away from the roadway. What we wanna do is we had a lot of success with this in the past at other gravel pits is, and I wanna show this on the plans, is we'd like to put a berm in kind of along the, the perimeter of the gravel pit along West Shore Drive. Kinda like Billy Plant did over, um, on West Shore Drive, um, in his pit. We'd like to put like an earthen berm in that's probably about fifteen feet tall and it'll be vegetated. And what that'll do is it'll buffer any sound, any noise, um, any dust. Visually, you also will never be able to see our operation from West Shore Drive. And we think that that berm will really go a long ways. So I'm gonna show that on the plans moving forward is that the first thing that we do before we excavate in, um, in this area closer to West Shore Drive is that we build this berm, we use, um, onsite materials that we would use for reclamation like loom. And then once we're done excavating a certain area, we can take that material from the berm and use it to reclaim. So it's right there, it's ready for us to use, but it's serving a purpose along the way. So those are kinda the big things I wanted to talk about and I'll, I'll pass the mic over to Rodney. Oh, the last thing was that, uh, as far as the garage goes that we were proposing, we don't wanna go any bigger than eighty foot by sixty foot would be the absolute maximum, um, for the garage. um, for the garage, and I, I know you guys wanted some clarification on that, so...
What was it, eighty by sixty?
Eighty by sixty, yeah. Um, I don't think we're gonna build something quite that big, but we just kind of wanna have the flexibility. Um, it'd be nice to be able to park like two front-end loaders in there possibly, and that's kind of our thought process, um, is to be able to park like two pieces of equipment in there, and the winter would go a long ways. Um, and those are kind of the, the most important things I wanted to talk about, and I'm gonna pass it over to Rodney, since you have a question.
Yeah, about the, uh, the wash area.
Yep.
Can you, oops, sorry, but where the three ponds are gonna approximately be located on the, on your plan?
Yeah, I could do that.
And?
Yeah.
Just curiosity, why there's three of them?
Three, the purpose of having three ponds is for settling, um, is your first pond where your wash water goes into, um, you settle out probably seventy-five percent of your solids, and then you, the good clean water kind of floats off, and then it, it'll head into a culvert to a second pond. So, you can have separate ponds, or you can have like one large like horseshoe-style pond, but if you, if you had a horseshoe-style pond, what you would do is you would have like some, um, I guess like barriers along the way, um, that would help with your settling process. Um, so you, you kind of dredge out those ponds like as you're washing, and then by the time that water gets to your second and third pond, it starts to get cleaner. Um, and by, so by the time it gets to your third pond, you've settled out all of your, your finds, um, and then you can draw, you can reuse that water. Um, so we wanna have this as like a self-contained thing, um, where all the ponds are gonna be ten feet above the water table. Um, we're not gonna be relying on going below the water table at all for this. Um, we'll rely on just natural rainwater, um, but we're gonna, we're not gonna be doing like a lot of washing out there, um, but we just wanna make like some inch, washed inch-and-a-half stone for septics. Um, so to answer your question, the three ponds allow you to reuse your water.
So you're only washing in one pond, and then two of them are more like settling ponds, or are you, are you dipping the material in each of the three ponds?
The, the way it works is that, like, say pond number three is your last pond.
Yeah.
And that's where you're gonna have clean water.
Yeah.
And you'll pump the water from pond number three into your wash plant. You'll wash the stone.
Okay, so the, the plant is separate, and then the, the water goes into three ponds?
Correct.
And is brought back to the plant?
Right.
Okay, so there's, you're not like actively washing in the pond?
No.
Okay, gotcha. No, I'm just trying to get it.
Okay, yeah.
Get it in my head, all right?
Yeah, no, you're not actually like washing anything physically in the ponds. Um, the ponds are just, are just used for recycling the water that you need, and the plant that we would use is fully mobile. We're not, we're not gonna be like putting in footings or foundations, uh, to build a wash plant. It's just a, it's just like a screening plant that's on tracks that has some spray bars on it. Um, and that allows you to wash, like, uh, we'd probably wanna wash a little bit of inch-and-a-half stone, as I mentioned. Um, so I'll have more details about that in the operations manual, and I can show the ponds, uh...
Okay, yeah.
On the plans to kind of make it a little bit more clear.
Well, I think we'd like to have them maybe as far away from that stream as possible within the delineated area you have.
Oh, yeah.
Um, and it is interesting, Jason, just put this map up here. Um, I know we weren't gonna dig into this tonight, but might as well mention that in your, um, application, you said you don't have resource protection on the, on the property, but this right here is a three-acre wetland with a seventy-five-foot buffer that you need to put on your plan and make sure that, um, all your facilities are outside of that buffer.
That, that one wetland that you're showing right there, um, we've submitted a letter already to Jason from, um, Gary Fullerton up at Sebago Technics, and, um, did, he identified that wetland as a forested wetland versus like a traditional wetland, I believe.
Right, but it's on our resource protection map for the town. The only way we can change that is to go to a town meeting vote. So, it is the Resource Protection District in the town of Acton. I wasn't gonna bring that up tonight, but since you had the map right there, it seemed like a convenient time to mention it, so you could put it on your revision.
Showing a seventy-five-foot buffer.
That's on there. You see that pink line around the brown? That is the seventy-five-foot buffer.
Right. Is that what we're showing on our plans right now, is a seventy-five-foot buffer?
Well, you have that wetland on there, but you don't have the buffer. I don't have your stuff in front of me, 'cause I wasn't really expecting it.
So, I'm gonna have to go back and look, but I had this conversation with Jason at my very first pre-application meeting, um, where Gary actually supplied a letter to Jason saying that, um, this area should not be in resource protection because...
Right, but like I was saying, the only way we can get out of resource protection is a town vote.
Is a town vote?
Well, it's the Resource Protection District in the town of Acton, so we have to change the zoning district.
But if you have a letter from a certified engineer that says it's not actually a wetland, it's a, it's a forest, it's a forested wetland?
It doesn't really matter, because it's, it's on this, this map right here.
Okay.
That it has a seventy-five-foot buffer that you, that you can't operate in.
Yeah, I mean, I kind of swore, Jason, that when we had a conversation about it, that...
You asked me if I would, if I would, um, make the decision myself. That was our conversation. I said I'd have to look into it.
Okay.
Right, and none of us really have the authority to waive that stipulation, so to speak.
Okay. Seventy-five-foot buffer, yeah.
Yeah, the conversation we had is because you wanted to, you wanted to, me to say that it was a forced wetland, and I said I didn't have the capability of doing that without having a, you know, and then, because you, your, your, your intentions were to use this area to get to that hugback, correct?
Right.
That's the conversation I remember having with you.
Right, you have an existing logging...
There's an existing...
Skirt's the edge of that that may be within the...
Yeah.
And I, and I didn't say yes or no, I just, I left it at it was, I'll have to look into it.
Okay.
So... Right, that's more conversation for another day as well, probably, but...
Well, I'm gonna, I'm gonna look at it in more detail, 'cause I thought I had clarity on it, but apparently I need to look more closely.
Yeah, if you look at this official shoreline zoning map two of two, it, it's, this one's wicked small, but I do have a, a full-scale one I can bring in, and pretty much, that's what it shows, and that's the only resource protection you have on the property.
Right. Uh, even if it is a seventy-five-foot buffer, I don't think it's going to affect our plans too much.
No, it's not a huge buffer.
It isn't, yeah.
But you might have to get a wetland delineator in there just to, to find the edge of your resource and then add your seventy-five feet.
Right, to have...
You're gonna have to have them in there anyway.
Right, a hundred percent.
Around the pools, so...
Yeah, but you could still use the logging, existing logging trail that is on the perimeter of that.
Um, the planning board has the right to allow you to, you, to put a road through the Resource Protection District if there's no viable alternative, so you basically would have to prove to us that you couldn't get there any other way.
Okay.
Um, so we would have that discussion at that, some, sometime.
Yeah, there really isn't another viable way to get into that one area, um, 'cause that's really like the best solution for, for getting in there. I could get into it more, but...
Right. I don't think we're...
I think, I don't, I don't foresee this being a huge problem. I think that the trail's actually on the perimeter of it, and that we should be okay.
Yeah, I don't think it's gonna, it's not gonna impact you greatly, but it does need to be properly delineated.
Probably shown on the plans, and, yeah. Well, that's a revision I will also look into then.
Great, thank you.
So I'll let Rodney introduce himself.
Hi, good evening, everybody. Uh, my name's Rodney Kelshaw, and I am with Flycatcher LLC, and, uh, before we get off this subject, I have a question that might help in the planning, your planning on this too. Um, how is the ordinance specifically written about how that's depicted on a plan? 'Cause I know the town that I used to live in, um, our ordinance was really old, we never updated it, and it was written so that, um, if the, if the, if the shoreline zone went along a, like a road or a property line or something like that, or a stream that you knew right where it was, then you would use that feature as the offset, but if it were, um, like inland wading bird waterfowl habitat or something like that, or, you know, a ten-acre wetland, um, even if you changed the delineation, so if somebody went in and delineated it on the face of the earth, that wouldn't change the shoreline zone. We still had to use what was shown on our town maps and then scale it from there. So I'm just wondering for Matt's purposes is, um, 'cause they've had a wetland delineation performed on the site already, so they could do the seventy-five from what they have now as the onsite mapping, or depending on how it's written, do they have to just sort of show that, that bubble, I guess? If that question makes sense.
You're saying the, do we go with the map or the delineation of the...
Yeah, the town, the town that I used to live in wouldn't let you go with the delineation, because like you said, it's shown on, it's shown on the town map.
Right, exactly. That's, that's what was, this, on September twenty-ninth, two thousand and eleven.
Yeah.
This map was approved by the voters.
Yeah.
So that we do go by the map, um, but your, the wetland delineators' input would be helpful when determining the placement of that access road, because we can, uh, where does it say that?
Matt, when was your, your wetland study done? When it delineated? It was, you said it was, I remember the conversation, you said it was older.
You can give it on the map.
The delineation was done like September?
Oh, I thought for some reason you had said it was a few years ago.
No.
Oh, okay. Oh, okay.
Could've, would've, should've.
Well, chairman.
I was, I was listening.
Okay, well, we'll, we'll definitely revisit this issue for sure.
Yeah.
Um, but I, I, I'm pretty sure we'd go with the map, but, um, I'm looking for that, um, citation where it talks about the access road, but I'll have to find it for you for, for the next meeting.
Okay, yeah, that would be great, just knowing where they're making some tweaks now. If they can, if they can show it the way you want it the first time, then we'll, it'll make things a lot easier for everybody, so...
Sure.
Yeah. Uh, so, like I said, Rodney Kelshaw with Flycatcher LLC. I'm a wetland scientist, um, soil scientist, and wildlife biologist. Um, Matt's asked me to come in tonight just to talk to you a little bit about the project, and, and more so, um, where they are still making some fine, fine-tuning and tweaks. Um, if you've had an opportunity to look at the, the draft maps that they've provided so far, if you folks have any questions that are more specifically related to wetlands or wildlife habitats, or just habitats in general on the, on the project that I might be able to help you answer at this time, and then again, that will help them as they're tweaking things, if, if, if you have a question or a comment that might, that might help in that area. So when they get the, when they get the next map back to you, it's as close to being as final as possible for everybody.
Um, I did have a, I mean, a question about the, uh, delineation of the vernal pools and the, um, allowable twenty-five percent of disturbance within the buffer. Um, I wanted to make sure that my interpretation was that that was in between the hundred and the two-hundred-and-fifty-foot lines around the pond.
Yeah, yeah.
It's not within the hundred feet.
Right, to meet the, uh, Department of Environmental Protection, um, permit by rule, then, yeah, you'd be out of the one hundred, and then twenty-five percent of whatever you control that's on your property.
Okay, um, and I did, um, of course, none of them have actually been determined to be vernal pools yet, correct?
Correct, yeah, and, and I'll preface too that I'm, I'm not the one that's done the, uh, wetland delineations or the potential vernal pools. I have been on part of the site, and it snowed, didn't make much sense to go back out and see anything else. Um, but yes, everything is a potential vernal pool at this point, and Matt's having the original delineators go back out and verify that in the spring, so then they'll know which ones actually meet the criteria to be significant vernal pools, and some of them might be a, just a vernal pool that doesn't meet that criteria, and then other ones may just be wetlands.
Now, if the vernal pool buffer has already been disturbed by greater than twenty-five percent, are they still permitted to disturb twenty-five percent of the existing buffer? If, you know, if they didn't create the disturbance...
Yeah.
Um, if, if you look to the far left of the screen, H Road is taking up half of the buffer on that...
Oops, sorry.
Yeah, I can answer that.
Yeah. You, you get, uh...
You see where I'm, right there, yeah?
Yeah.
You see how H Road is, um, snug against the pool, so to speak?
Yes.
And it's already eaten up, um, half of the buffer, so to speak. Are they still permitted that twenty-five percent, even though it's already been compromised by more than twenty-five percent?
Yeah, typically you get twenty-five percent of whatever you control, so if, um...
Okay, well, that answers my question, but...
Yeah.
That is a little, just interesting one.
Yeah, it's twenty-five percent of what's on your property. So the person across the street, if, if the buffer goes on his land, he can take twenty-five percent on his side.
Yeah.
'Cause what happened was, when the, when the rule originally went into effect, it wasn't written like that, that you got twenty-five percent, and when people found that out, they went, "Oh, well, at some point I may wanna do something on my property over here. I don't want my neighbor to get twenty, my twenty-five percent." So people were putting in applications and trying to disturb their twenty-five percent, so nobody else got it, and then the DEP quickly saw that over a year or two and went, "Well, this isn't working either. We need to do something that's fair and still protects the habitat at the same time," so...
Yeah, all right.
If I might say something, uh, we're on the property across the street, and in thinking of that wetland that you're looking at, the more I thought about it, is during the construction of that hole, coming across the mountains, they did a lot of blasting, they took gravel from our land, and rocks from the other side, and they created a road. But the more I thought about it, is that spot is a low spot, and I think he talked about it being a vernal pool, it could be, whatever, but I think it's a, I think it's more of a man-made low spot that was made during the construction of that particular, uh, road, which is that over a period of time, it was, you know, quite a costly thing.
They took a gravel out of it and made the dump. Mr. Winchell's seen it. That's where they had the gravel right down that hole where they did the dump.
Uh, what, LaMalle?
Yes.
Well, it could be, uh, 'cause Albert LaMalle, I talked to initially, and he was digging around behind that wetland that you see there, but I think that possibly, you have to go back to the way the glaciers left the land, and then how man comes in and reconstructs it or redesigns it, and it could quite possibly be, that could be man-made.
Mr. Langley already looked it up, 'cause he had a pit, and he said that that, he could, he's got the records that show that that was dug up. If you go look at that, that hole in the front, you can see there's a face still there. You look at it. Mr. Langley was telling me that he looked it up, and that is where the select, Winchell's grandfather got the gravel to build the dump from that face right there, so that...
From the face, yeah, but I'm talking about, I'm talking about the road construction of the, of the road coming through. When they came through, they came across a mountain, and they did a lot of blasting, and if you look on the right-hand side, it just, it slips off. The glacier came through, the ice knocked it over, whatever, and it looks to me like that could be part of the construction of that road, or it was a low spot, and they just let it be. So, it's not, nothing to do with them hauling the gravel, which would've been done behind it, and it was like an escrow, I believe, behind it, you know? But I'm talking about just the wetland, so...
So when, when you're designated, designating a, a feature as a significant vernal pool, or even in this case, if you're out not during vernal pool season, um, and you're calling something a potential vernal pool, typically what the, uh, wetland delineator will do is look at the feature, and if it's obvious, if it's obvious, Jesus, if it's obvious it's man-made, they'll say man-made, and if it's man-made, it, it can't be a significant vernal pool because of its origin, it's gotta be natural.
We haven't actually had a study done on it yet. We just, we just have a delineation around it, and we just... around it, and we just said, it's a vernal pool. We don't know yet.
Right. I only brought it up to that.
You're just saying it might be, when we're not sure.
We're not sure, yeah.
Just for, just for clarity too, I went to a workshop on vernal pools, and the delineation characteristics are the species that live in the pool, which is like the bog hunter, dragonfly, and blue spotted salamander, fairy shrimp.
Yeah.
It's based on the species that are there, and that a vernal pool that has been man-embellished can still be considered a vernal pool.
That's what I was going to say. There's three sets. There's man-made, there's natural, modified, and then there's natural. So if something is natural, modified, so let's just say you've got a big wetland, and there's a low spot, and the critters could be laying eggs in it, and then somebody also drives a skitter through it and makes it really nice, and they lay a lot of eggs in where the skitter ruts are, because it's a little bit deeper, that's something that would be considered natural, modified, where it was already a wetland that could act as a vernal pool, and through our actions, they just made it better. So in a situation like this, you know, if I'm out not during breeding season, and I see something and I go, it could act as a vernal pool, it looks like it might be man-made, but I can't tell right now, I'm going to call it potentially significant and potentially man, man, man-induced. And then, you know, you find out later if it meets the criteria through the indicator species as being significant or not. And right, and that's blue spotted salamanders, salamanders, the fairy shrimp, wood frogs, and then rare threatened and endangered species that also may use the habitat.
Yeah, yeah.
Yep.
What time do you determine that vernal pool?
Springtime during the breeding season. So in southern Maine, it usually starts closer to mid-April.
Mid-April.
Yep, and it can run through beginning of June, mid-June in this area. Usually the wood frogs will come in first, and then spotted salamanders may come in after.
We're gonna, we're gonna.
Unless you get lucky and you time it just right, usually you have to make two trips.
Excuse me? We're gonna keep moving forward.
I'm sorry.
Yeah, yeah. We're drifting off the 15-minute thing.
Yeah, am I, am I out of time?
Yeah, pretty much. Yeah.
Yeah.
If you don't mind, sorry.
Nope. Well, thanks for your time.
Yeah, thank you.
I'll have those reservations in this week.
Okay. Yeah, thank you.
All right, sounds good.
Uh, Matt, send me, send me an email tomorrow, or give us a, just trying to figure out because that was very, next planning board meeting, we can.
I was like, pretty busy, I don't know.
Trying, trying to come up with two, but not gonna have much time for it, because it's been, I'm assuming they're gonna want us to do all the ordinances, talk about.
Fairy shrimp, I like that thing. It's like a flea.
Oh, yeah.
So.
I kind of know my bugs from.
It's not because this is wrong, so I just say.
Well, they know how much you come across very often, that's right.
Yeah, I'll get you a call tomorrow.
Yeah, yeah.
Oh, thanks for helping.
I know you want to spend more time.
I wish I had more time.
Hmm.
I didn't know you were coming. I would have liked, I would have liked something for that before. If you have three cars, I'd go like that since.
I was only seven.
No, I would have liked.
I was just curious how it's operated.
What you do is you set, who's doing the shake rock?
Logan or.
Off the rocks, just shake it. It just takes the dirt off the rocks, and goes in the first one.
Yeah.
And then it starts to settle, and then the water that goes.
Jason told me that.
Right.
Yeah.
Right, right.
And that's.
I thought.
Somebody told me.
Make sure that.
Long view.
We've been doing that stuff, you know, stuff that needs to stay.
Next agenda.
You know, process. I don't know.
Yeah, we'll talk and touch base and figure out.
We're gonna, we're gonna move on to the next, just Pat, we're gonna move on.
Crystal, crystal.
Thank you.
They have snow since December.
Sorry, this is a public hearing, the next meeting.
Well. For this. Yeah, well, I don't understand how that happened.
It was, it was when.
Well, thanks, Jason.
It's getting shoved down our throat, you know. There's no need for it to be in March.
Well, I think this is the one, so we could get feedback if we have to change anything.
Right, but the town needs to.
No, I haven't.
That's funny.
She wore something higher.
Yeah, no, I haven't.
You haven't heard that rumor?
No.
Oh, my God.
I didn't start it.
Oh, fuck.
Just wanted to bring it up anyway.
All right, what do we have this under?
This window bothering anybody?
No.
Please let me know.
Oh, did you want the?
I'll close it right away.
I can't hear any birds, though.
All right, which ones do you guys want to review first?
Exactly. 30 days per June 15th.
Just offer.
Matt, did you, we could totally have this thing in April.
Mm, shoot.
So I just.
Yes, Jason, well, I get, we have a question. Why, I guess, is this, having, why are we having a public hearing on this next week?
That's what I was told we had to do, that it's for review, so if any, if the public wants to make any changes prior, that's just kind of what the, I was given a, a table of, of dates that we had to hit, and I pushed, we were supposed to have the public hearing tonight. I pushed it back a week so that we could, we could review these ourselves, and if there's any kind of tweaks we wanted to make, then we would make it. But I was told, and.
Who told you?
Jen, town administrator, as well as, she got the, the, those dates. I can go grab the.
You wouldn't, it says 30 days before the meeting.
On page eight.
Yeah. Can you go pull that thing off the wall?
Here's the good news. Do you?
You know what I'm talking about, right?
Jason should have, you didn't tell him that we could use, change the word for definition for structure, right?
You can do the structure one.
Okay.
Well, because there's no, as far as what we've been told by, by the town, I think it was the town legal, that there has been no appeals, anything like that, so it's kind of, it's been.
Okay, but we don't have something ready to go.
Yeah, I.
Well, that's the thing. It's like we, we've just been kind of shorthanded for the last month, and.
Yeah.
It's like the, the hearing is kind of a little preemptive.
When does Bernie?
It's, it's gonna happen no matter what. The hearings, it's been posted, and.
I don't understand why the planning board doesn't vote on when the hearing is.
I'm given a certain, it was a strict guideline, and I was kind of in hot water when I changed it the first time.
What you have, that you've been looking at, is a timetable that we used in, in the year 2020.
Yeah.
When we went.
Hey, man, I'm just.
That was just the timetable we had, because everything was ready.
Right.
All our changes were ready for that time, so we did it then.
That's the one that I had.
I'm just, honestly, I'm just doing one year out of all the years.
Right.
In this situation, I'm only doing what I was told, because I obviously haven't done it.
Can I make a suggestion?
I'm not changing the public hearing.
I'm not asking.
Okay, that's good, because.
That was not gonna be it. No, it's just to make it work, we have a workshop scheduled for Wednesday, next Wednesday.
Okay.
Or did you cancel it?
Uh, well, you guys haven't had two, you guys haven't showed up for the last two workshops, so I think I told Jen, no more workshops.
Well, you told me to go home.
I came too.
I made some phone calls, and I was told that they didn't think that there was one, so I didn't call everybody. I apologize.
I was one who said, I don't think we need anymore.
And I, and so did the chairman.
However, given the circumstances.
I wasn't sure.
Why don't we think about reconsidering, just so that we get right for, and we're ready for the town.
I mean, so the, the definition of structure is right from, is the one that we talked about, is right from the state of Maine.
Bernie has.
We're not concerned about that.
Right.
I think the major zoning ordinance change that we want to do.
Budget timeline is what I was getting.
I know, but that's what we did in 2020. That's just what we did in one year.
Literally, I'm just going by what I was told to do, and, and I'm following what I was told, and they pretty much, when I pushed this out another week, I kind of got slack on it, so.
Right, well, I feel like the planning board should be voting on when we hold our public hearings, because we have nothing ready for mineral extraction performance standards, and I don't want to be going to a public hearing with a blank piece of paper saying this is what we're going to be presenting. And the last two workshops were canceled. You haven't been here for, for the two previous meetings. Ashley hasn't been here for the previous two or three meetings, so we've been shorthanded, and now we're stuck with a, a hearing that is unnecessarily soon, because we, we could do it in April without a problem, and it would still meet all the criteria, and we'd still have time to have a, another one even, before the 30 days, so.
I can see if we can have another one, but like, I, I still have to have this other one. It's been posted. People are already planning on coming.
Right, but it's.
But having another one.
Planning board didn't vote on the date.
Yeah, and it has to do with, it's not just the planning board, it has to do with something with the warrant and finance committee and all this other stuff. It's, it's more, yeah, it's, it's, there's more than just the planning board involved with this, and I, I'm still trying to figure it all out. So, yeah, I, I just know that I had to tell, I had to.
So you're telling us that the proposed changes that we want to make, we're not going to have enough time to do it, because you want to have a hearing preemptively soon?
I don't want to. I won't have a hearing.
It's circumstances, so what, what do we have to do to make it work?
Well, we have to get.
We can't make it work. We won't get the, the pit changes done.
Before that.
And the third. Yeah, two weeks ago, not, not yesterday, but the week, the Wednesday before, I came in here at 3:30 to, to discuss that, and the thing had been canceled.
Yeah, I was driving.
And that's when, that's, if we had been able to discuss it that night, and then yesterday, we would have potentially been ready for the third. But I, I don't, I feel like it's.
Sorry.
Just.
Premature.
Well, yeah, and it's, I feel like we should be voting on when we have our public hearings. They shouldn't just be determined.
I wasn't given an option to let you get to have you guys vote on when you were given the, the public hearing.
Well, it doesn't.
Then why do you need a planning board? Why does the town need a planning board if other boards and other people are going to dictate to us our job? I mean, it's ridiculous.
I'm not disagreeing with you at all, unless.
We had that coming.
I know, I, I, I actually, I, I don't want to say much, let's put it that way.
No, I, I understand that you're kind of stuck in the middle, but the, the thing is that we've had, you know, we've been shorthanded, and now we're.
Throwing in fire.
Yeah, it's, I feel like.
I'm not disagreeing with you at all.
Right, no, I know you're not, but I, I mean.
Is it possible to present everything that we could get ready?
Maybe we should just present one of the, one of the zoning ordinance changes at that hearing, and then the rest of them at the next one. We'll just do the rentals at that one, because we know it's going to be big. People are going to want to talk about it a lot.
Yeah, I'll, I'll find out. I'll, I'll verify if we can do that tomorrow.
You have to salvage this somehow.
People, you know, they're not going to, well, maybe we could do the mixed-use structures too, if we can get this thing ready. We could pick a couple of these to do at that hearing.
Yeah.
Because if we do everything we've got except the one, it's going to get lost on us, and nobody wants that.
You probably.
So I guess at this time, we should go through these, these things and try to get them.
Well, that's kind of what the, I was hoping to do tonight.
I think we could.
Do tiny homes, that'd be cool.
Great idea.
Do you want to do the orange one first?
Which one is that one?
Use. I don't know if they got, did they get the last, they, the consultant get the last changes we sent?
Yes.
I got it.
For solar and?
I, I got a revised copy for solar. Is that what you're asking? You just asked me?
Yes.
Yeah, I, I just printed those up today, or I just had them sent to me yesterday.
So what we have is?
Is, is.
It's revised.
What it is, yeah. Well.
No.
You're saying no?
Oh, I see.
Well, I mean, this thing certainly isn't complete.
Which one is that one?
A mixed use, because you have, relative to mixed-use buildings, and then the thing is actually about mixed-use structures. I mean.
I actually made that, I, that's my fault. I told him to change this right here to a structure also, and I'm noticing that that's not changed.
Right, and it says attractive land.
Yeah, and it's supposed to be structure. I had that conversation.
Well, no, this might be the latest, but it's not the, it's not what we're taking to any hearing.
Right. Well, that's why we're doing it tonight, so I can make any quick changes.
You want to go through this one first?
Yeah, yeah, I most definitely do.
Strike out attractive land.
Yeah, I would just cross out attractive land, yeah. A building or structure with a variety of contemporary integrated uses, such as but not limited to residential office, manufacturing, retail, public.
So you don't want it mixed-use buildings, you want this up here structures?
At the top of, yeah. Yeah, because that's what we have in the land use chart.
So relative to mixed-use structures?
Yes.
Yeah, because that's our definition of structure and our, yeah, yep.
Yep.
And then we're all happy with it being CEO review, that Jason will take care of these things, or, or do we feel like there's, there's some reason that it would be a conditional use?
I thought we were going to change some of these letters.
My, my notes had it the way it is.
Yeah, we changed, there was a bunch of stuff that we changed, and, and I went with it to the guy too.
They had some conditional views, and we turned those to no's.
Right.
And then they had some P's, and we turned it to R's.
Right.
Right, but we're hap, how are we happy with the way the chart is right now? And we do need to have aquifer protection district, N is fine with me, but it needs to be highlighted.
Right.
Mm-hmm.
Because it is a change. And I think that it would probably, R is probably adequate, because.
So you have N in rural. Doesn't that, isn't that conflicting? Remember the Crowley example?
He was in commercial.
He's in commercial, yeah.
If we put it in N, we, I refer back to page eight in the zoning ordinance, we, we enter a new echelon of changes.
And we got to notify all the abutters. Is that what, when you're talking about?
Yeah, because, because we would, we would, it says, sixth line down, if the amendment constitutes a change in zoning district boundaries, which it doesn't, or other amendment which would permit commercial, industrial, or retail uses where previously prohibited, or prohibits all such uses where previously permitted. Notice of hearing shall be made to all owners of all property that's within the affected area, or abutting in area affected by the proposed amendment. So if we, if we allow these mixed-use buildings in the rural area, we would have to.
How long would it?
Notify everybody in the town that lives in the rural district.
Do you know if you have that anywhere?
But we can do that, but.
How long would you take them to form one up and do it?
It wouldn't take me long to find that.
I don't think we want to open that can of worms.
Hey, Pat, do you still have the definition of structure that you were showing us previously?
Um, yeah.
Does anybody have it? Because it'll take Ashley five minutes to do it up.
Oh, well, we can, all we do is go to the definitions in this one, and we just added in those three types of.
Right.
But why are we leaving this one?
Let's not do that yet.
We'll get to that one. Well, I was just, while we're doing this, I was going to have her go draft it for you. Or, I guess so, but she's, honestly, she should be taking notes on our comments on.
I am doing, I'm doing that too.
I think Bernie might have sent it.
Okay.
Because he, because he sent you everything, and then it came back that it wasn't, it was being taken off. So I think you already have it.
Well, let's try to finish this mixed use, and then we can go on to structures.
Okay, so you don't want to open up that can of worms?
Well, I'm just, I'm, I'm just putting it out there.
I agree.
That, do we want to permit basically stores anywhere in the rural area? I mean, that's. And I, I don't think we do.
I don't. No.
No.
So cottage industry wouldn't be considered manufacturing?
No, if it's on.
What was that?
Cottage industry?
That's home occupation.
Yeah.
Okay.
Wouldn't you think cottage industry is home occupation?
Yeah, you're allowed, and agricultural is an exemption too, stuff like that, yeah.
Agricultural is an exemption, okay.
If you wanted a farm stand and you wanted to sell your stuff on your, of your farm, of your stuff, that's an exception.
Okay.
But it's not, I'm not, we're not looking to have a-
Stores.
No, not in the rule, but no.
So that's what that means?
Right, Dairy Queen downstairs, apartment upstairs.
Yeah.
I think that's all I see on this.
The actual definition though, you guys are-
Striking the tract of land from it?
So it would be the development of a building or structure.
Where are you?
Right here. Get rid of that.
Develop?
The development of a-
Highlight your definition, mixed-use structure.
Oh, we just had a building. Is that what we're, a building or development?
We put a building. Now, you want a development?
Oh, it used to have that. I don't, it's fine by me if you want to do a building because you're just defining a mixed-use structure, development is an action.
Right.
So I'm fine.
Yeah, so a building.
Okay. So we're good? Good with that one?
Do you want to?
So, does he have it on his email?
Gavin's-
What's that?
You're still thinking on-
Oh, of structure, I don't know without looking.
Bernie would have sent it.
Wait, look at my emails.
Yeah, we don't want to know what pops up on your emails.
Uh, what is he, PB6?
Eee, uh-
Three.
Three.
PB3?
You're six, no.
X writes a lot.
He's three.
He's six.
I don't know, but I think he's three.
Yeah, he is three.
I thought it was you and I'm like-
Wait, you're six?
Yeah.
I'm not sure that's public information.
No, no.
We had that in, but then we said we're not doing it.
Right, it's pretty simple, it's just a-
Had a faulty reprimand, you want?
You don't have yours. There's only three binder things.
Hold on, all is not lost.
What are you looking for, Pat?
The definition of our structure.
Uh, I don't have the big fact book with me. I know what page it is on in there, but I also had something printed off.
Yeah, I'm sure I've got it somewhere.
Okay. I took it out because I thought, oh, we're all done with it.
Right.
I have so much paper. Through those.
Call Bernie. He was on vacation.
It's pretty simple.
So-
I know, I just don't-
A structure means anything, I don't know if this is the one we're looking for, anything constructed or erected or fixed?
I got it. The, the change was that the definition now excludes subsurface wastewater disposal systems, geothermal heat exchange wells and water wells. So that's what we need to add to our definition.
And it would be right at the end of line two, pretty much, we stick those in.
Can I have it?
I have that, so I don't know where it is.
I like that.
I know, it's nice. At least I didn't try to devolve it in.
So wait, the new definition would read-
It's like Big Man in a little suit.
Wait till Ashley's on the same page.
I need to get a picture of that real quick.
You can have that piece of paper.
I'm going to get it back, just in case we have to go through this again. Okay.
I gotta get mine somewhere.
I'm gonna hold on to this then. You want it? I got a picture of it, so.
Okay, so the new-
Just added to, I think it said-
Right here, "Anything built for the support shelter or enclosure of persons, animals, goods, or property of any kind together with anything constructed or erected with a fixed location on or in the ground exclusive of..." And then the, then that verbage, subsurface wastewater systems, geothermal wells and the third thing. And then you flow right into fences and poles, wiring and other air equipment. Does that make sense, Jason?
Yeah, exclusive of-
When they told me about the heat coming-
So we're going to add subsurface wastewater disposal systems, geothermal heat exchange wells and water wells.
We were ready. But who's to determine if we're ready or not, right?
I didn't know, because you didn't have one the week before, then-
That's the one we showed up for.
Give that to John, please.
I think I was coming.
Thank you.
I was just half hour late because I was working.
Last week I could have made it, it was-
Okay, let's chew down.
So that makes sense, right? We're just plugging those three in right before fences and poles.
Yeah, I'll, we'll draft it up tomorrow and we'll email it to you, so if you guys check your things, just verify. I know you don't check, Gavin, but-
Oh, them alls can look at it.
These other people can. People, these board members.
And that would just people to you. Thought we were numbers.
Right, oh, you are, one, two, three, four, five, six.
I don't know which number I am now.
That's two to go to the public, the public meeting?
No, I think we should just keep going through them and then once we've gone through all of them, determine which one we want to discuss on the third.
I think tiny houses is done because it is kind of covered already.
Yeah, tiny houses is really just format from what we have.
Yeah, right. So that one can go in, it's provided, everybody reads it and it's okay.
Tiny house.
However, what happens if we have to go through all of them at this public hearing?
Well, we're going to vote tonight.
And they just have to deal with it.
Well, we'll still have the hearing, we're just not, well, we're going to address half of the changes so that we can have another hearing to address the other half.
Right.
I think that's totally fine.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We're within the parameters set forward by the zoning ordinance. I'm just reading the tiny house thing.
You guys are going to get me yelled at.
That's right.
Not your fault.
No, I'm fine, I'm-
You are not allowed.
I'm going to reach page eight of the ordinance. That's for the WF crew.
All right, so we're on tiny houses here?
Yeah.
Okay.
So the language on the back is from the state language. The only thing we did to refresh your memory is we made the definition short because the state definition includes what we put back in the performance standards. Add something in the new section 15-3.
There's nothing stricken through, so we don't have to worry about that. It's just shaded, it's battered.
So 5.1, 4.3?
Yeah, it will be a new section.
Yeah, I think they're-
Dwellings.
Multifamily. And I should have checked where we're putting in-
That was the only definition.
Yeah, mixed use didn't, doesn't have any performance standards.
Didn't we say we're going to rely on the neighborhood standards?
Yeah, yeah, because it's applicable to everything.
Yeah.
Okay, and then?
That looks good to me.
I think tiny houses looks good.
So there's one I had stuffed in here too because there's some stuff in our ordinance that I needed some clarification on and I, what I did was I adopted the main definition as well and for the, we, I didn't realize that we already, I mean, accessory dwelling units. I was, wanted to see if you guys were okay with this and our definition. So it's not allowed and it needs, I'll clarify it too, so the ADU is not allowed in certain districts, meaning the shoreland.
Yeah, it's on page 14.
Yeah, so it's-
Used chart.
It's not allowed in the shoreline, the resource protection and the Little Ospe- Nope, excuse me, just-
Nope, yeah, those three.
Yeah, and, yeah, the Little Ospe district. Outside of that, so what I did with the state definition as of 2019 was, you can read the definition, we don't have saying detached.
What we do have though is an existing definition of dwelling unit, comma, accessory, which is a permitted use, accessory use to an owner occupied one family dwelling.
Accessory dwelling.
What Jason told me earlier today, not to put words in it now, to me that gives them the flexibility to say we can put grandma in the room over the garage, detached garage.
Right.
Although I guess there's been some question because it doesn't say you can do it on a detached building.
So in another section, let me find that, it says within-
Yeah, what's twenty?
Oh, I'm trying to think what section that puts in.
Why are you looking for that? If we're going to do this, I would, I would, I would need to make it dwelling unit, comma, accessory, and then we have to line out existing definition to put in there.
Right.
I made a note to fix the formatting for it.
So you want to put it right in here?
Yeah, it would change that definition.
Yourself could do that.
Accessory use or structure?
On page 66, Gavin.
Yeah, 5.1, 4.1, 1.1.
Yeah, it says, "Within an owner occupied single-family dwelling units shall be permitted." So it only says within as of right now, so I had, I had talked to one of our town attorneys about this and it just didn't make sense to him. And as well, I'm trying to look, I was looking for clarification on a certain situation and-
On 66, additional dwelling units, and it has A through D right above multifamily dwelling units?
Well, that's different, ADU is different than accessory.
So then, okay, that's probably what-
It says only one accessory dwelling unit right below additional dwelling units. Additional dwelling unit is just the heading, but then we have the same, well, we have the same ADU for two different terminologies there.
We were adding residential rental, no, that's tiny, never mind, that's a different one, rental units, never mind. I have tiny house crossed out and I have 272J, page 14, two single-family residential ones for tiny house, so that's not this either.
And then in the-
Yeah, it is, it is.
Accessory?
Additional dwelling unit, accessory dwelling unit, we're talking about, we have two different verbiages for the same acronym. But we do have A through D is for-
So what, what should this be? A, C, D?
I think the heading maybe should be changed to ex-
Accessory or?
Well, we should, yeah, we got to change one, I would change one or the other just to make that compatible, so to speak. Do we prefer accessory or addition? I think accessory is a better term.
I think accessory and then, like I said, and this is-
So we'll change the heading of 5.1, 4.1, 1.1 to accessory dwelling units.
5.14, 1.1. Going to strike that out and change it to accessory.
Figure out additional.
Right, replace it with accessory.
Strike, that's a line through. And then it's going to be accessory that's shaded. This is what we did last time.
Then, then A has to change to redefinition.
Yeah, well, I mean, it kind of, we kind of got a-
Hey, if this is something that we don't want to do right now and just move on to the next, that's fine, it's just a-
We leave accessory use alone because it's different than an accessory dwelling unit.
Only one ADU located on an owner occupied single-family lot shall be permitted. Does that make sense because then you-
Yes.
Yeah, and I think that's fine. If they have a garage that's not attached to their house, but they want to put grandma upstairs in the garage, that's okay.
So you're adding lot and striking dwelling.
And it has to be maximum 800 square feet or less. That's, that's the stipulation.
That doesn't change.
Anytime you go over, that goes into a multifamily and you change just everything.
We have to stop with the grandma thing because we're going to hurt people's grandmas' feelings and we're going to be in trouble.
Well, they used to be called in-law apartments.
Well, that's why-
That's why we call them accessory dwelling units, just to get away from that terminology. All right.
We don't want to offend any grandmas. Some are good, some are bad.
Okay, all right, so we're going to change the heading to accessory dwelling units instead of additional dwelling units. Then we're going to, only one accessory dwelling unit located on an owner occupied single-family lot?
That's where we get into the territory where a tiny house could be considered an accessory dwelling unit.
And it can be.
Why can't it be?
Well, because our definition, our discussion on our definition didn't-
Stop it.
Allow that.
No, it's not. In fact, that was one of the things I was-
We specifically discussed that twice. That, that we didn't want.
Like, this hell, we're going to, they would have to have their own septic, right? Was that the conversation?
No, thank you.
Well, every, every unit, every property has to, you can't, yeah, a septic has to comply no matter what. You don't, if you don't have, if your house is three-bedroom, you have a three-bedroom system, you can't go, you can't put a, another toilet in there because even if it was a, I think main state is, any new structure requires two bed, even if it's a one-bedroom, it's a two-bedroom minimum. So.
So tiny house has to have two bedrooms?
It doesn't have to have, but it's to be required, any, like a new structure and I have to have some clarification on that.
Gavin, what were we talking about?
But that's-
Not having a lot that would be-
Crowded.
Studded with tiny homes?
We're trying to avoid, trying to avoid having two residences on one lot.
Right, but if you used it as an accessory, it would be okay.
Under one, and then if you go into more, then you get into multifamily and it has to meet dimensional requirements of more property, raw street frontage- to meet dimensional requirements of more property, raw street frontage, there's, there's a bunch of things that go with it. So anytime you have more than two, like, so, yes, you can have an, like, an in-law apartment, accessory dwelling unit, but then if you go into three units, then you're looking at a whole different slew of stuff. And it's, and it's not permitted in areas such as, like, I think, critical rule doesn't allow some of these things.
Safe.
I don't know.
Wonder practically if they're even good for an in-law apartment, whatever you call it.
What?
Because the lot, you get to climb up into the bed over.
Not necessarily, I mean, the bed could be right on the floor.
Yeah, sometimes, it's like a camper, even like a camper, a pop-up, you can take that kitchen table, and you can lay on top of that, type deal.
Yeah, yes. Tiny homes is a good show.
You should watch the videos, yeah, they're really.
Some of them are live.
Let people put into those.
Sidetracked.
Well, you're the only guy that's on this one.
Well, it's possible, maybe we should hold this off until the next hearing, so that we have time.
We can hold it off, it was just.
So that we have time to.
That's aside.
All right.
That's fine.
There's more to it than just.
Yeah, no, and I can deal with this on the side, it was just, I was trying to make things easier, clarified for myself, it's all about me, guys.
You've had like three weeks off, I'm very tired.
All right, so, do you want to deal with the short-term rentals or the solar, because I think that's gonna be something that's gonna take up a lot of time.
Well, first off, with the short-term rentals.
That's out, the short-term rental thing, that's the old, this is out.
Because it's not short-term anymore.
Yes, they're combined, right? They're supposed to be together.
It's just residential rental units now.
It's totally out, just residential rental units.
Right, but didn't you need it to be fixed, because it was voted down last time?
Yeah, we're just not gonna do it, we totally changed what we're gonna propose. Now we're proposing rental units, all of them.
Okay.
So we don't need that.
Well, yeah, so, we don't, we don't want to use this format to do it, because we have.
Turn the pink.
Oh, it's a pink one, oh.
Put the blue one in there.
We all did.
Oh, I got the, I didn't, oh, got to.
I was getting thrown off, I.
Okay. So the blue one's gone, okay.
Blue one's gone.
Oh, that was easy.
I like the blue color.
See, we're whipping right through this stuff tonight.
I do them in colors, that way I can see across the way and know which ones you're working on.
You can do the solar in the blue now.
So, this was from my notes, right, if you look on the second page, we have, we noted, we put tiny homes, and then, a new house, residential, and my notes said they were adjacent all the way across the board.
I'd, I'd be impelled to think that we would.
We really didn't talk about.
No.
Much.
I'd be compelled to say not permitted in the Resource Protection District, but permitted in all the other districts, or CEO review, R, in all the other districts.
You're gonna get into.
Resource Protection.
You're gonna get into all the vacation spots.
On Resource Protection.
You're not?
That's true.
I know.
Well, that would just be my inclination, and we don't have to do it.
Well, let's look, let's look at the picture.
Can you bring up the picture on that?
A picture of what?
The map.
Zoning map?
Zoning map.
Would you want to? Um, I can, give me a second.
I don't have bottle cap glasses, I got.
Um.
Gavin said he didn't think that the rental unit should be in Resource Protection, so we're looking to see what's in Resource Protection.
Oh, it's not on this disc, guys, I'm sorry, I don't, I don't have it on this.
It's you code.
You did, because you brought it up for Peppin.
I went to the zone, okay, yeah.
You could just overlay it on to something.
All right, so.
If you just go to your flash drive, it's in a, just a document on your flash drive.
Okay.
It's showing you the folders in your flash drive, but if you go directly to.
I just, actually just got a big map of that, and I, I didn't bring it in tonight, because I was gonna bring it in.
All right, hey, you guys, where are we going?
With Peppin right then, so I, I'll bring it in next meeting.
Okay.
Um, next, next one, that's one of two, we want two of two, there we go. Now, this is the town, town designated Resource Protection District, which protects wetlands down to a size of two acres, and what we did was, we took the same scale, like a ten-acre wetland, has a two-hundred-and-fifty-foot buffer, so basically that's twenty-five feet per acre, so we put that into all of our smaller wetlands in the town, so a two acre, starting at two acres, a two-acre wetland would have fifty-foot buffer, three-acre wetland would have a seventy-five-foot buffer, and so on, and.
Can you build a house in Resource Protection?
You can't build one, you can, you, you have, if you have one there, you'd go through a similar process of the thirty percent expansion, just like in the Shoreland Zone.
But if we had one there pre-existing, and they wanted to rent out a room.
Right, it's on page five, expansion of structures existing prior to September twenty-ninth, two thousand and eleven, in the Resource Protection District outside the Shoreland Zone. Page five.
That might make somebody turn down the whole thing, that's my worry.
Yeah.
And if you, if you're not allowed to build there now, it's not gonna be expanding anymore anyway, so you wouldn't be infringing on anyone else to rent out what they own, and you won't have to worry about anybody expanding, because you can't build in there anyway. So, putting a no in the resource might be a mistake.
Okay, I mean, I hear what you're saying.
I'm just, I'm trying to rationalize, do you think, I shouldn't say would be, you know?
Right.
What, what do you think?
Yeah, I mean, if that's.
I'm just trying to play devil's advocate and not have this thing turned down again.
Right, I guess I'm, I mean, I'm.
With all the Rs, I think people are gonna feel comfortable with that, with no Ns.
Right, right.
People do not like to be told no, or they can't do what they want with their property.
One of those is, this might be a long-term rental.
I just feel like if you look at, I mean.
Yeah.
Some of these other, other things, other.
Yeah, I don't like them either.
Facilities, like childcare facilities are not allowed in Resource Protection.
It's because of septic.
Child daycare as a home occupation is not allowed in the Resource Protection District.
It's because of the septic, but if there's already a house there.
But as a.
Is what I'm saying.
As a home occupation even, it's not allowed, so, I mean, I'm, I'm just, I'm just feeling it out, um.
But that's an expansion, I don't think there are any childcare facilities, are there?
Well, what do you think a childcare facility is, isn't that?
It has lots of little kids with bathrooms, and I think that's the reason.
But this is as a home occupation.
But still, you're bringing children into your house, and they're, they're gonna be using your bathroom, and they don't want that in Resource Protection.
Well, and that's, I feel the same way, you, you have a rental unit, and we're cramming four people per bedroom in there, every.
Are we still doing the four per person, per room?
No, we, we haven't talked about that, because we didn't resolve that at the end on the, on the.
I think it must have been out of this conversation, it must have been.
We were going to ask the chief, and he was gonna designate somebody to go and talk to him.
The chief or a master plumber for what the right answer was on the capacity, the max.
It said four per bedroom.
And when Ashlyn and I did this this afternoon, we just left that out and said, you have to have a state-approved septic, but I, I do think the capacity issue needs to be addressed, is my personal opinion.
Because some of the camps, you don't know how big those bedrooms are, they're probably tiny, and to say that they could have the whole family come and squish four people in each one of those tiny bedrooms is dangerous.
But I mean, that's, that's exactly what I'm saying with the Resource Protection District.
For?
The septic, I mean, it's the same thing as the Shoreland Zone, it's just, we're not gonna restrict it in the Shoreland Zone, because that's where these things exist now.
Right, but the houses only, there aren't too many of them, right? Or are there?
Houses in the RP.
What's the answer to the question?
I don't know, we'd have to take the, um.
I think we should look at that before we make a decision.
I mean, these are all good reasons that we're not ready for this hearing on March third, like this.
Well, that one.
I really feel like Bernie should be here for this conversation.
I agree, and I don't think.
To get us ready for that.
We didn't even get to where, you know.
Well, let's, yeah, let's bypass what I said, because it was kind of a, it didn't help us out, let's keep going through this thing, see if we can find something new.
Okay.
It was just a suggestion, it's not.
So, you, I, will you, if I can get permission to do a workshop on Wednesday, is that what you guys are looking to do?
No, because we're doing this now, and we decided that we weren't gonna try to present everything.
Right.
So, no.
At the end of this meeting, we'll pick a couple that are ready.
Yeah.
We think sufficiently ready to have a public answer.
Right, because like, I can't, this, this document right here for rentals, I'm not ready to present this to the public, because we have these questions that we have who we can't answer.
Bernie also wanted the town lawyer to look at the definitions of owner and rental units, because there's, you know, he's a lawyer, and there's some legalese, and we wanted to make sure the town lawyer didn't have any objections to him, and I don't think we've done that.
Okay, so I'll, I'll read through the, what we've got on the second page here, so it says definitions, so, so this is the definitions of an owner, we're gonna be adding A, B, and C to the definition section of the ordinance, any person or persons who alone jointly.
There is no, excuse me, there's no owner in it right now, and because we talked about an owner down below.
Right.
And we felt in that meeting, we should also define owner in A, in this meeting.
Right, because then we had the whole conversation about agent and.
Right, and then, and then, what Bernie came up with tries to cover all that.
Okay, so any person or persons who alone jointly, severally, or jointly and severally with others, A has legal or record title of any dwelling, dwelling unit accessory, dwelling unit residential, and/or dwelling multifamily, B has charge, care, or control of any dwelling, dwelling unit accessory, dwelling unit residential, and/or dwelling multifamily as an agent of the owner, executor, administrator, trustee, or guardian of the estate of the owner, or C has an equitable interest in a dwelling, dwelling unit accessory, dwelling unit residential, and/or dwelling unit multifamily under a contract or bond for a deed with the person having legal or record title.
You're gonna need a lawyer just to interpret that.
It is, well, it is a mouthful for a definition.
It is, and, and once again, you wanted another legal deal to look at.
Uh-huh, okay, so, I don't have anything that I would.
Yeah, I don't disagree with it.
Right, right, I don't, I don't have any way that I would change it right now, but I sure wish it was shorter, but, for a definition, but that's okay.
The one question I had there, and also now, under residential rental units.
Yeah.
And, kind of plays into the previous conversation we just had, since we're putting in tiny homes, do we need to specifically call out tiny homes in this definition, where we're calling out the others?
So it says residential rental units include any dwelling.
Dwelling.
Dwelling unit accessory, dwelling unit residential, and/or dwelling multifamily or portion thereof, in which space is rented or offered for rent by the owner or operator.
We got already, it says, wait, for me, it says any dwelling, why, do we have to describe everything?
Any dwelling would cover tiny house?
I think it would cover everything. Unless you wanted it to say exclu, excluding something, right now it says any dwelling.
I think part of what, part of the rationale for that is, remember, we're trying to cover every situation, so, somebody who rents out a room in their house. And I guess you could say, well, that's still part of the dwelling.
Well, can't you say excluding?
I think John's right, I don't think that it would work without putting it specifically, because we call out everything else.
To define.
If you look at dwelling unit, it doesn't include tiny house, so, why don't we just put it under the definition of a rental? Because people will be renting.
Do we, do we feel like it's fine for people to be renting a, a tiny house?
You could say excluding tiny houses.
Well, you know, if grandma passes, you have a tiny home.
No, you gotta, you have to say that.
There may be a situation that comes up where, you know, the use of it is actually gonna change.
For a rental.
I just feel like, we gotta be careful, because if, we could end up with a situation in the Shoreland Zone where someone puts up a tiny house as an accessory unit.
There's no accessories in the, in the Shoreland Zone.
There's no accessories in the Shoreland Zone.
It's already, it's already stated in our land use chart.
That's covered.
Yes.
Okay, all right.
Can anybody see any other reason why?
I don't think so.
So you want, I, because this is a Word document, I can insert right now.
Where do you want it, John?
Well, I wanted to make sure you guys considered.
But where would it go?
Not necessarily sold, but, well, I think you'd have to add, wherever we list, the list of dwelling, dwelling unit accessory, dwelling unit residential, dwelling unit multi, multi, somewhere in that list, I think we'd have to put comma, tiny, tiny houses, or tiny homes, where do we go, tiny houses?
So, dwelling unit accessory, tiny home, comma, dwelling unit residential, and/or dwelling, it's up on the.
Multifamily, just put it at the end, make it simple.
Well, I, yeah, I can do that.
What did you say?
I just added it, I just added it right here, tiny homes.
Yeah, make it houses, though, because that's a term we use.
Yeah, that's, I was just gonna say.
I want to just confuse it a little bit more, so let's say we go before the town, and they, they vote first on tiny homes, and they vote no, and now we have a proposal that has tiny homes, as we did on arrival.
Oh, that's a good point.
Well, first, I'd like to say, I don't think they'll vote no on tiny homes, but.
I don't either, but that's always a possibility.
We, we could just, just say. Just say, like, any legal dwelling, I mean. Or any, any dwelling as, as stated in the zoning ordinance, or.
Any permitted dwelling, any?
Yeah, I mean, we could do that, too.
Okay.
It'd be like a catch-all.
Yeah, I'd like Bernie to see that, but.
No, of course, well, we're obvious, I mean, this is kind of Bernie's work.
I'm not gonna change it on the document yet, I'll just write it down.
No. I don't think we should be changing.
Yeah, so that's just a question to resolve, is do we need the whole list, or can we simplify it?
Yeah.
And say, any approved dwelling, ordinance approved, or?
Accepted.
Any approved or permitted dwelling, or is that the same?
Any permitted. By the zoning ordinance.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
I think that I would, I think I'd be fine with that, but, there's, yeah, okay.
Yeah, those are his words, I think I'd be fine with that, too, as a way to shorten and.
Right.
Make it a little less legalese.
Any approved dwelling?
I like permitted.
So don't forget to take out tiny houses on.
Any permitted.
It's still up there on the computer.
Or approved, because I don't, some of these files, I don't, they're sold, I don't have, I can't, all I know is they're just a structure, I always think it's grandfathered, but I didn't, you know, I don't know, approved, I don't know, permitted.
Both, any.
Any, or approved or permitted dwelling.
You know, I, I can just see somebody saying, well, what about, so devil's advocate, somebody says, well, what about my accessory unit, my dwelling accessory unit, what's the answer to that? Well, it's approved or permitted dwelling.
Yeah, and they can rent that out, yeah.
Yeah, I know, okay.
It's not the, not the reason we put ADUs in there.
Right.
But, that's okay.
Yeah.
It's a loophole, let them find it themselves.
Well, now we just told everybody, just part of it.
Well, I mean, if they're renting their whole home and it had, had an ADU, they'd be able to rent that part of it, too.
Not just somebody's.
Makes sense, you know, and then, so if they're living in the main structure, they wanna rent their ADU, that's okay.
Yep.
Okay, and then. So now we're down to residential rental units, like the, uh, 5.3.
Yeah, the, uh, back down what.
We gotta change that formatting, you know that, right?
Yeah, I don't know why I did that.
It currently ends at 80, and we reserve 5.29 for solar.
Right, all the, yeah, all our numbers are kind of.
Well, we didn't wanna go back and remember what it's been.
No, I think that's great, I, it's, it's just that same issue you had before about the, if one's, one passes and another doesn't. But, but it's more likely the solar will pass than this one, so putting it first covers our bases.
And I do think that units will go.
Yeah, yeah. So, A, owner of residential unit in Act and Main must register said units with the town's code enforcement office by December 31st, 2022, or.
Houses is still on there. Right. He's gonna take it off. I have written a note.
What are we doing?
It's on his computer.
Tiny houses, you're talking right here? Yeah, get rid of that so that we.
There you go, just so we don't mess.
I didn't even, I wasn't paying attention, I was getting ready for a nap.
Just making sure. Well, I have the master console on my computer. I know, but it's on his computer, and if you take it off.
Right.
Don't wanna run into the same trouble we did last time.
Okay. So, December 31st, 2022, or. I think within is one word, right?
Yeah. Yeah, it is.
Changed.
30 days of first holding the property out of rental or renting the property thereafter, whichever comes first. B, the property owner shall provide a valid certificate of insurance covering rental as a use and name in the town of Act and as a certificate holder. Yeah?
Does that put the town in liabilities?
No, it gives us, um, access, what did I say, gives us the ability to ask, I think.
Want me to FaceTime him?
Okay, C. Well, I mean, we're gonna have to go over this with him anyway.
Yeah, that, no, that was, um.
It was a reason.
Yeah, I know, I remember the conversation, I, and I remember wanting, him wanting to add certificate holder. Um, I think it was, oh, you know what it was, is so that we would get a certificate every year.
That's what it was.
Because otherwise, they could get insurance, they give us a certificate year one, then they're renting it for 10 years, and they don't have insurance for the, for nine years because we have no way to know if they renewed their insurance.
Good memory.
But if we're certificate holder, they present us with the, with the certificate every year.
I guess my issue with that one is, isn't it usually on the, I mean, and this is different for short-term rentals versus long-term, is the renter's responsibility to provide rental insurance, not the, not the rent, not the person renting. I thought that the occupant needs to get their own rental insurance.
It's different insurance, that's to cover your own crap.
Okay, okay, all right, I'm fine with that, I didn't, I, I didn't, no, I just wasn't sure.
Right, well, we wouldn't, we wouldn't wanna accidentally require that, because we, we don't care about that. Right, okay, um. C, the property's E911 address, property owner slash operators, telephone number, and rental permits stating permit conditions shall be posted visibly to tenants. Yeah?
Yeah.
D, at least one fire extinguisher shall, shall be accessible on every floor of the building. Yeah?
Yeah.
E, each rental unit should have a code compliant egress or equivalent has. I would say get rid of A, each rental unit shall have code compliant egress or equivalency as determined by the Act and Fire Department.
Fire Department or Code Office?
Fire Department. Because they're the ones who go and do the inspections.
And he offered, remember when?
So you don't have to do it.
And that's actually more flexible than what we had before.
Mm-hmm.
Because they had to have the big enough windows and.
Egress window in every bedroom or.
So, if there is, in his words, when you talk to us, you know, he, he thought it was a good egress whether the window was the right size or not.
I think we can get rid of or equivalent altogether. Each rental unit shall have code.
I gotta be careful with that one, I gotta be careful with that.
As determined.
Because, uh, re, re, in, I gotta make sure that within my codes, like any current structures, if you're doing an ADU, you don't need an egress in each, like the bedrooms, each different room. You know, if that, I wanna make sure that's not stepping on my toes. You know, because some of these old structures only, like, they don't, they're grandfathered, and so you're just giving them one act, one egress. But now if it's, you're saying new structures, um.
Okay.
You know, you're kind of where I'm going with that, I don't want it, I gotta make sure I'm not stepping on, on code, the code's toes.
No, each rental unit shall have code compliant egress. Okay. Because it's not singular, A code compliant egress?
Yeah, you're right. I'm, I was thinking, yeah, you're right.
Well, because.
Well, some is grandfathered.
Leftover from A code compliant egress window.
Yeah, probably.
It's singular, whereas code, code compliant egress could be five different locations.
Yeah, you're all set, I, I was overthinking it.
But, but equivalent should stay in, like you're saying, because, because the, because we don't wanna be tying our hands with the code compliant egress if the Fire Department says this is good enough.
Right, and that's what he offered to do, that's, that's added flexibility that wasn't in the last one.
Yep, the next one's good, too.
And F, code compliant smoke slash carbon monoxide detector must be installed and operational. Are we just?
On each level and in each bedroom.
Should we say A code compliance, or? Because we have detector.
Put an S.
How's this?
Yeah, code, code compliant smoke slash carbon monoxide detectors must, so S, must be installed and operational on each level and in each bedroom.
Yep.
Okay. And a state of main approved subsurface septic system shall be installed.
They might get scared of that one.
Well, they were last time, but.
Right, but if we say.
Well, they can have their, their existing inspected.
By the state, or by?
Yeah. We could just say a state of main approved subsurface septic system.
Shall be.
Period, I mean.
Connected, shall be, into, shall be.
Or the, the residential rent, residential rental unit must have a state of main approved subsurface septic system. Because it's saying shall be installed is intimidating.
That's what I mean, shall, sh. State of main approved subsurface septic system shall be. Maybe it's shall be that I can't get past.
Just cross it out.
Yeah, I would cross that out.
So, get rid of the shall be installed completely, and just have state of main approved subsurface septic on prop, I mean, I don't even.
I would say each residential rental.
Shall be approved. No, approved subsurface system, I'm just trying to say you have to hook up to it.
Well, we had, where, whatever we had before, oh, wait, that's the one I got rid of. It's in this one. Says. A state approved subsurface septic system shall be installed.
How about in use? How about in use?
But that falls in the line of, uh, the full person per bedroom. Well, we haven't got to that yet.
Shall be in compliance with the amount of dwelling units.
For.
Well, before you go there, let's finish this up, I, I think, um, resal- rental units shall provide a state of main approved subsurface septic, septic system? And that still has a shall.
If it's, if it's in use, it has to be approved, and I think if you just say in use, then, then they will understand, if they ha- already have a system, they're probably gonna be all right as long as it's approved. But if we say installed, that says, you gotta, you gotta put in a new one.
Yeah.
So, that's gonna.
Maybe we should say inspected. Because they might have, they might have a state of main approved subsurface septic system. They approved it, but it was in 1985.
Sure, inspected would work, I'm just trying to say.
Yeah.
I think that's gonna bring more controversy than.
How about in use then, what do you think of the word in use?
In use, I would go, I would go with in use over inspected, because that's, we're making everybody have an inspection.
That's why we had shall.
Okay, so they don't have to do anything else, they just have to know that they have a septic system.
Not a porter john or, or an outhouse.
Right, a septic system has to be in use.
If you say, if you get inspected, I think that's gonna make people be like, well, now you're making me go spend more money.
You're right.
And I, I get where you guys are coming from, but.
That's a big part of this whole.
But approved gets inspected.
But when was it approved?
Well, he has to, they have to go and get.
Yeah, but what happens if it's not approved?
So it has to be looked at.
Right.
Well, if they come in and do a permit, if it, if it's gonna be a permit process, then yeah, I have to review their file.
Has to look at it.
So you don't tell them, can you have your septic inspected?
Approved.
Well, if, if they got a septic on file and it's, and it's been approved, then it's approved.
Yeah.
I wouldn't say inspected, because I think he's right.
Well, I just feel like it could have been approved, approved 10 years ago.
It's still, it's still in use, it's still functional, I don't.
Well, it's not, it's barely still functional.
Look at it, though, he will.
If it fails, it's on the property owner.
But he doesn't know what he's looking at.
Yeah.
Oh, I don't go, I don't, I only look at it while they're being installed, I don't go through after the facts.
No, he doesn't, he can't tell if their, their leach field is full or not, if their leach field needs to be replaced, that's not.
Yeah, you can. You can go out, it's squishy, you know, problem.
We don't, if, if, if it's seeping, that's one thing.
Yeah.
If it's failing, I can tell you if it's failing, but I can't tell you if it's going to fail.
Right, if it's gonna be overburdened by the new use or no.
I mean, that's on the property, I mean, if he goes, if he, if he's making $200 on a rental, and then he goes and ruins his septic system, it's gonna cost him 20 grand to replace, probably not a good idea to be renting, but now it just cost him 20 grand because of his rental property.
Right, but that, we can't, we, we can't reverse the impact on the lake once that's happened. We wanna prevent that from happening.
Yeah, ah, wait, wait, wait. You're just setting yourself up for, for getting injected.
On radar.
And you can take comments from the, from the public on this one.
I don't wanna get stuck on something that's gonna make.
So I can put inspected in there, and if they don't like it, we can change it. You know, we don't have to make the full decision tonight, it can be put out there for the people.
I have a state of main approved subsurface septic system, period. That's, that's, oh, well, I don't know if we need to change it on that document tonight, because I, I really wanna run this by Bernie, too.
You don't like in use?
No, I don't like.
Shall be installed.
People are gonna think they have to put in a new one.
Well, they probably should, if they're making money off their property.
Then they'll know.
Well, you can put in use, I just feel like it, maybe it's redundant, but I don't mind putting it in.
So they don't turn it down?
I mean, who would have a state approved septic system they weren't using, I don't know.
Well, it's a way to.
Well, say that you don't have to get a new one, that's what that says.
You don't want them putting a porter john on their, on their property and saying, hey, we're gonna use this.
Well, porter john might be better than a, overburdening the thing.
It's getting pumped, right?
Yeah, it's cleaned once a week and, um, anyway.
Yeah, okay, well, I feel like.
Period or in use, is that what was settled?
I got in use on there right now, I'm gonna, I'm gonna leave it right that way, and.
You can think about it.
Okay, and then Bernie's initial, and this is what Chris was bringing up, in his input to us, um, he has a sentence after that, maximum occupancy of the unit shall be no more than blank, and parenthetically, we put need input from chief smith and/or master plumber. You weren't here, but we said we'd get Jason to track that down, we never have. And so I don't know how we come up with the maximum occupancy, which is a.
Yeah, I would think maximum occupancy should be determined by the Fire Department. Because they'll say, you know, you can have this, because they do that for larger buildings.
Well, yeah.
Per room, per dwelling, per.
Bedroom.
Per.
Because you can have 15 people crashed out in the living room, plus four in each bedroom.
Two persons.
Right, but it could be a one-bedroom place, one-bedroom place, and then it's fine if someone's sleeping on the couch, the place just wasn't set up that way.
The HUD handbook manual.
Yeah.
That's what that says.
See, wouldn't you, um.
What is the rental occupancy for, things landlords are not allowed to do? How many is too many, limits on unit occupancy, occupancy explained, how about the second one? Um, there you go. Uh, three adults, fit into one bedroom, 500 square feet. The answer is not as straightforward as you think. Uh, not a traditional family rate, housekeeping unit. The social concept has evolved, social concept, principal challenge, four decades ago, California founded cities legislative definition of a family violated it. Uh, as long as the group bears a generic character, how many is too many?
I don't think that's on.
It's the square footage, according to the section, the occupancy of four people in a smaller than 1,200 square feet would be prohibited. For a studio, it's three persons.
I think that's safety related, I think what we're concerned about here is the lake and the quality of the lake, and if you have 20 people and, you know, a little two-bedroom house.
We needed that square footage.
So you think we can rely on square footage?
1,200 square feet per, for, per four people. And how much is that per person? 300?
Yeah.
So that's 10 by 12 bedroom, right?
Yeah.
I think, I mean, that would be the only way.
But how do we come up with that square footage, it's kind of arbitrary.
Well, how do hotels, it said go with HUD, H U D.
Well, yeah, the.
Hosing.
Hotels allow before people go bedroom, yeah. Yeah, again, I don't.
But the square footage has to do with that.
Yeah, yeah, sure.
And that's, that's what we're talking about, it's the square foot, it's the size of the room, how many people can fit in the room. So it's probably 300 foot per person.
And how quickly they can get out or something.
Yeah, again, I think it's a safety thing, and we're concerned about overlooking the septic system. I think it's two different things.
Yeah. Both, both are issues we're dealing with.
One thing I forgot to look up.
Well, true.
Yeah.
But all the other stuff, I think, helps with the safety part.
Mm-hmm, the smoke detectors.
Yeah, and he's gonna go and make a walkthrough, but I think, you know.
Should at least have at least 70 square feet.
One or two occupants must have at least 120 square feet of living room, three to five occupants must have at least 120 square feet living room, and 80 square feet, oh, this is not even for bedrooms.
Dining room?
No, we're not doing that.
Why do we put a master plumber, what are they gonna tell us?
I don't think that's gonna.
So, when it comes to septic systems, it goes just by bedrooms, it doesn't have anything to do with occupancies, occupants. So, when I, when I, when I review a permit, uh, a subsurface wastewater permit, it goes by how many bedrooms are in that dwelling, and how many bedrooms or flow per, whatever it is, um, that can, can.
Well, we could call a septic designer and ask him, we have a two-bedroom place, how many people can the septic take? You ask the septic designer, how many people do you?
Yeah.
How many flushes do you design this thing for with, that it's a two-bedroom? How many flushes do you design this thing for with, that it's a two-bedroom? How much do they eat? How much do they weigh?
Yeah, it's...
Do they have dogs and cats, you know?
When they design a system, they don't design it for that. They literally design it for the amount of bedrooms in the house. Really does. They don't even include showers. You can have three bedrooms and five showers, but they only do it for the three bedrooms.
We had that discussion probably for half an hour when you weren't here the other day. And we're, we're still on it.
Because I do think maximum occupancy needs to be addressed.
No, I, yeah, I think the fire department should, should give each building that's rented, when they go to inspect the fire detectors, whatever.
Yeah, it's not, I mean, that's...
They can come up with...
Give them something to refer to, like square footage.
Well, yeah, you let the occupant know, okay, this is, this space is habitable for six people. This space is habitable for eight people, four people.
Eight, twelve, it's only, it's, uh, kids' rights spaces.
Yeah, we'll put it on, yeah. You can't just say, okay, you wanna come and rent it, you have twelve people, no problem. You only have six hundred square feet where they're gonna sleep. You know, figure it out. No, but I think that if, it should be, I don't think that's a bad idea. I don't know how to present that to people without getting people in a frenzy, though.
Well, nobody had a problem with the four people per bedroom at the town meeting. No one had a problem with that.
There's more, if I can remember, there's more the cost that it would be, because one, right, that one lady said she did all this upgrades and then she was worried she's gonna have to do more. That someone said it reached, like, city laws or something like that.
Well, that was the one lady had a bunk room.
Yeah.
And she had to, because she wanted to sleep ten people in one room, and...
Right.
And, um...
And it was like, but she did all these renovations, and it's like, she's gonna add more cost to it, you know?
I think she was more annoyed that we weren't requiring these things to have sprinklers, because we required her to have a sprinkler.
Well, wait, sprinklers are, wait, because she's in a subdivision, probably, right?
No, because she, she had a bunkhouse. She went to have a bunkhouse. And...
And she was required a sprinkler?
You'd have to take it up with the previous code officer, honestly. I don't have the full story.
I would be pissed.
That's what happened, though. No, at the, at the Zoom hearing, at the Zoom hearing, I had to deal with her, I remember that.
Yeah, I'd be, I'd be a little upset, too. You know, it's, you know, that was that cost to, to...
Well, you want to say maximum occupancy of the unit shall be determined by the Acton Fire Department? Just leave it at that?
I think we should...
Shall be, shall be determined according to the square footage?
Or we could just leave it up to the fire department to determine that.
The fire department can do it, but we, we shouldn't say that they would do the number one.
Well, we could ask them what we should put in, and we could ask the fuck, the...
Right.
Because some...
We could ask him.
It has to be written on...
Need input from Chief Smith.
Well, yeah, because you can have, you can have a building that's twelve hundred square feet and only one bedroom. And you can have a building that's twelve hundred square feet with three bedrooms. So you can't, you can't just say that...
But how many people can be in that bedroom is what the issue is.
Well, I get that, but what happens if you have a sleeper sofa in the, in the living room?
Right.
Well, as I said, you can put four in each bedroom, and you got...
Yeah, I, how much can that occu, how much can that dwelling occupy is where it comes to. It's not how many bedrooms you have. Because if it's a rental, some people are maximizing what they're trying to do, and they'll have a sleep, sleep sofa.
But we were talking about the septic and what that could hold because of the...
Then again, the septic goes by your bedrooms, it doesn't go by your occupants. That's just, that's how they design them.
But it's also a safety issue with fire, as far as people getting out.
I, I get that, and then leave it up to the...
Fire department, because that's the most important thing.
Well, we could ask the fire department if they want us to put a square footage, or if we just want it to say they can determine.
I'll, I'll talk to Rick tomorrow. I'll follow.
You know, Rick.
Yeah, I'll give him a follow and see what he has to say, if, you know...
That's settled.
Yeah, because I, we do need to, you know, on my road, there are fifteen, twenty cars at one house.
Boston Bozos.
Yeah.
Fifteen and twenty cars?
Yeah. It's too many.
I'll, um... Yeah, I, I'll ask him, but I, I just want to be careful on how we proceed with that one, because if you guys are gonna put this much effort into it, and to have something like that, and to shoot it down, I just, for some, you know, I'll be... Yeah.
Well, I don't, I think this will be a very close vote anyway. But I don't, I think the whole thing.
Yeah. I don't think this is gonna make it break, yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, I, I just kinda told that by other, by other people, but...
Do you remember, you were, do you, why was this started anyways? Do you remember?
Because people looked on...
Because this was...
Airbnb. And there was sixty-five plus places in Acton listed on Airbnb, and we said, this is a, a booming industry in our town that's unregulated, and we want to make it safe.
Right, well, I'm just saying, because Jason kept asking, I mean, like, I think it predates John, myself, and...
Well, it did, it's not a previous point.
Right.
So at the meeting last year, they talked about the town got sued, so that's the biggest thing.
Yeah. I had an individual come in and ask, and he said that I should, I just hadn't had time, slipped my mind, but contacted, um, someone who does a lot of rental properties in the area, but to get his input, but really, it's more...
You can come to the hearing.
Yeah, it's more of a safety thing, too. If you guys, I'll talk to Rick Smith. I did, I just didn't, I didn't contact that individual, but, I mean, when it comes to occupancy, that's, that input really isn't on, on, on someone who's renting properties.
Right, they're gonna want the most that you get.
Lessens the price.
I said, there's two issues, right? The issue is the safety of the people and the place.
Yep.
And the safety of the fire department.
And then the water quality of the lake from an overloaded septic. So I, I think it's important to put a cap on it, so...
Health and safety.
Yeah, well, we've...
So, yeah, we should put GH...
We got H on here right now, so...
Maximum occupancy of each rental shall be determined by the Acton Fire Department. And then we can ask Rick if he wants us to add anything about a square footage.
Maximum occupancy of each rental unit shall be...
Yeah.
Uh, defined?
Yeah.
Determined?
Not defined, I like defined, because it's...
Uh, the Acton Code, the Acton Fire Department?
Yes.
Yeah, he's gonna buy, um...
Do they have a floor plan, the fire department, of these rentals?
Uh, I think the floor plan would, would be submitted with the permit. Or at least, they would at least tell us the square footage.
I'm gonna have to figure out a permitting process for this, then I, um...
Because then, some of the fire departments, they actually walk through the walkthrough, like, different shifts of the walkthrough, the buildings, just to know...
Yeah, it's, well, that's commercial properties. You'll have the, the state fire marshal or the, or the...
Well, they will walk through.
He's already walked through.
He's gonna walk through, because he's looking for smoke detectors and fire, fire extinguishers.
Yeah, yeah.
And, uh...
The money needs to change.
Compliant egress.
Need to have that, so...
So he's walking through.
Oh, yeah, he, he said he would, too. Okay, so we...
I don't think that's ready for planning.
We beat, we beat on that one some, and we'll, we'll, we'll do that again when Bernie's with us. And hopefully get the fire department...
Input.
Input, and then maybe get him at a meeting sometime next month. So...
It's nine o'clock. Hello, UK.
The last one in my packet here, I think, is the...
Solar.
Solar.
So there's some changes to the, I think it was the last couple pages, there was bigger, the, the changes that were really put in. And I had to change a couple things, because uh, I needed to change it to a town, submit to the town a surety in the form of a cash escrow to be approved, because we had just a surety or something like that. The town requires only an escrow, not a bond. Or any other thing like that. And then, um...
Yeah.
The amount is to be approved by the planning board. They had the town manager. So we set the amount, the selectmen set the, the bond, which we already know what the bond is, um, for solar fields, which is an escrow, and then the planning board reviews the amount and, and, and sets that. So those are the, those are the changes that I made on, on that one. I left it as of right now. I was kind of waiting to hear from, I had a contact from Revision Energy, and he was supposed to put me in, I wanted to know what other towns were doing um, for the, um, decommission, like, the, um...
Decommissioning.
The decommissioning, how do they do it every six months? Do they do it fiscal, every fiscal year, uh, and things like that? So I, I left it at six, as of right now. But I was thinking it might be, I mean, and I understand where you guys are going, but I also think it might be easier, just a fiscal year. But either way, it doesn't matter to me. I setbacks, no, there was one other thing that I changed, but he didn't change it for some reason. Um, is the minimum setbacks, is the front side and rear is fifty. I changed it, I want it to say seventy-five, because that's what our town, that's what our standard is.
Can we change it to bigger than that?
Okay, we're...
It's more than seventy-five feet, I think.
Dimensional standards.
So P, yeah, so we're on dimensional standards.
One, minimum, one side's five acres. Two, maximum developed area slash area of disturbance per solar farm, twenty acres. That, I remember changing that. Maximum height, twenty-five feet. Minimum setbacks, front, side, and rear, fifty feet.
And so I, I don't know if you guys changed, I don't know if you guys changed it up, but any structure is required to be seventy-five feet from the center of the right away.
Yeah, we talked about that a lot.
So, I, uh, I...
At least seventy-five.
Yeah, so I want it at least, at least seventy-five.
All right, yeah, let's change that.
Because that also gives us, it'll, it'll give us possibly more of a vegetative buffer, so it'll give us, you know...
I think he said a hundred.
He did.
I think so.
No, because he had, um...
We changed it.
And then side and rear, I left at fifty, because right now my maximum is twenty-five, so I'd rather have fifty.
Right.
From, from the butters.
Right, I think, I think, um, the consultant had the, where was that, the, like, from a public road, right?
Well, I guess...
And we wanted it from private roads, too.
Why, so why are we treating this different than, than a structure? Um, so with minimum road frontage, I have, why, why are we changing it per district? So if, if it's in critical rule, it needs three hundred and fifty feet of road frontage, if it's in...
No, they're putting them in places where you couldn't put a house. Like, they're putting them in a, a strip of land, and I think that was why.
Right, it was like on the side of the highway.
Yeah.
All right, I, I wasn't sure, I wasn't in this conversation, and he just, he didn't have, um, the best clarification for me on it. He, he didn't...
We, we talked about that.
Yeah, I just wanted to know why. And he, he did say something about they were putting it on, on, on land that didn't meet certain dimensional requirements. But I just, I wanted to know why we weren't treating it like a regular structure, and that's all. It's fine. If the planning board approved it, then that's, I'm fine with it. I just wanted to, I wanted to kinda find out why.
He did question that one, too. I remember talking about it.
If he had it in this PowerPoint presentation, a picture of it or something.
So maybe we should go with what Jason says.
Well, no, because...
Maybe you don't want them in little strips of, you probably don't want them.
No, but it wouldn't be in a little strip. This is if there was a...
A road frontage of fifty feet?
It has to be minimum five acres, though.
Right, didn't you say you only have fifty feet of road frontage?
I only have fifty feet.
Exactly.
Well, you also need a...
Otherwise, we'd make them put in a two-hundred-and-fifty-foot, up to town standard road, just to have the...
And you also need a minimum of five acres, so it's not gonna be a small tract of land.
Yeah, okay.
So, but there are some lands that, they have that, and it's not, you know, yeah.
So are you changing that? Are we changing that?
I think, I think we're gonna leave it. I think we'll leave it. I, no, yeah.
But we did, there was some discussion about how we mesh this with our existing ordinance land use chart.
Uh, hold on a second, let me pull it up on my, um, email here. And I can actually, it'll have the, he has the side notes on it.
I'm gonna have to go, guys, I'm sorry.
Well, maybe we should wrote on this while you're still here.
Okay. That's fine.
Maybe we'll just, um, I think we can, I think this solar thing is ready to go to the hearing, honestly. I think there are some changes we're gonna make to it, but we can get public input and make those small changes. I don't have a problem with that.
Right.
I feel like it's, don't, Johnny, you feel like this is ninety percent done?
Yeah, I mean, there's a couple of myths I was trying to check, because that's what we're talking about.
Well, the, the biggest problem for me is, you look at the land use chart, and we have renewable energy installed on existing structure, renewable energy installed, installed on non-existing structure, and we were discussing the shoreline zone, and I felt like if they were putting solar panels on their house in the shoreline zone, that's great, but if they're putting standalone in the shoreline zone, maybe we should be considering that differently, because it's not, you know, and then there, so there is, there is still some finagling to do with this thing.
Yeah, I agree.
We're not gonna do it tonight, but...
Yeah, we can put that in forward.
Yeah, I think that, yeah, that's a good one.
This one had the side notes right here, so what we, what you guys had talked about, and, um...
That's mixed use.
Oops, I'm sorry. No, is it? I clicked on the wrong one, I apologize. Um...
There we go.
Okay, so we had changed, you guys had had this conversation about changing these.
So I'm thinking tiny houses, mixed use, and solar.
The white, the yellow, and the blue.
Yeah, on the third.
Yep.
Okay.
Three.
Yep, and we won't say anything about them, we're just gonna say these, like... You know, some solar.
White, yellow, and blue.
Did you want to do anything with the ADU, or just hold off on that for right now?
Um...
It's not ready.
Yeah, I'm gonna go hold off.
Yeah, that's fine.
I think we should give Bernie's input on that, too, because it's so intertwined.
Yep.
His thinking.
I would like to, if we can get that on this, on the planning board, on the thing for June, I would like to try to do that, but if we can't, then that's fine, too.
Those things, right?
It would be on YouTube.
It's not a huge change, it would be two definitions, with what...
Oh, I mean, for the whole thing to put that forward, because they are in the order.
I don't know, I would...
I see where, where, I see the confusion, yeah.
Well, there's more to it than just change.
Because we didn't, this isn't, we didn't ask for the, a space for this.
Right.
We rolled in...
But you also clogged, did you ask for the contractor yards?
No.
Oh, you did strike it completely?
Yeah.
All right. Well, if we can't, I'll, I'll find out if...
No, but I think we can, we can do two definitions, accessory dwelling and structure.
Yeah.
Two changes to the definitions, and this will be one of them.
Yeah.
And that's, because that still gives us
But see, the accessory...
I think I asked for six.
It's gonna have to change on the body, too.
Right.
So it's more than just the definition.
Right, yeah, we were not ready for this, these, these three.
I'll have conversation tomorrow and find out if it's even a possi, if it's a possibility to add another one. I don't, why, why not?
There's time.
I don't know why.
I already asked for six, though.
Right, well, we need six, because there's five right here.
Right.
And there's the performance standards for mineral extraction, so that's six. Okay, I make a motion that we hold a hearing on March third for changes to the zoning ordinance pertaining to tiny houses, mixed-use structures, and solar arrays.
Solar energy, this actually should be, have like, top of it like this, to, this is the least...
Right, this needs a heading, this one.
Yeah, I don't...
What are we gonna call that, those solar farms?
I don't know why it doesn't have one.
Solar energy, zoning ordinance relative to solar energy. Because that includes the little ones and the big ones.
Solar energy system? That's the first definition.
Solar energy systems, yeah. I think that's a good...
Yeah, that's good.
Yeah.
My second?
All in favor? Four or nothing?
Ashley's not here to record it, but...
We had the camera.
It's on the camera.
Yeah, that's for the minutes.
And Jason says he's taking notes, but we'll see about it.
What do you think I was doing while you guys were making your motion?
I don't know.
You're not supposed to put the camera on?
Yeah. You forgot.[1791.51]
Well, I think there was a meeting when I was gone, there was no camera here, right?
There was, right?
Um.
That's when we talked about, yeah.
That's fine, I would have, too.
Well, somebody's gotta write down that motion.
Did you write it down?
It'll be on the cam, uh, no, let's write it down, okay.
Right, exactly.
What do we have for a motion here?
That's fine.
Uh, well, you already voted.
I make a motion that we hold a hearing on March 3rd pertaining to the zoning ordinance changes for tiny houses. Mixed-use structures and solar energy.
Think I can write that fast?
Look at the.
Uh, yeah.
No, I make a motion.
Gavin made a motion.
To behold a hearing. On March 3rd.
Three, three.
I'm sorry, I gotta.
Pertaining to zoning ordinance changes for.
We're gonna get out of here, too.
Tiny houses.
Changes for tiny, oops, tiny houses.
Mixed-use structures.
Yep.
And solar energy systems.
Seconded by.
John.
Pat, Pat seconded.
All right, I used to jump.
That should be doing.
All in favor, four or nothing?
So workshop Wednesday, we talked about.
So, oh, you do want it. I thought she said no. I thought you guys said no.
Well, Pat, Pat said no.
I, I don't think it's a bad thing to do, and then that gives you a day, it gives us a day, even if we wanted to tune up on some of these other ones, you know, but.
We'd use you.
I mean, obviously you made a motion, we can't, we're not gonna tune up on anymore. We'll just work on what you're, what you're doing with.
Work on the other one.
Nothing right now for the pits.
Right, we have some. No, I think that's, yeah, I think we should have.
It's gonna be a tough one to, to get by anyway. You saw what happened with, any, I think any kind of thing's gonna be tough.
But that was, that was a rallying, that was a rallying cry.
Yeah, I, I don't care about that, but what, what I can.
Camera's off, right?
Be more explicit about the requirements.
You guys adjourned?
Not yet.
No.